All right, welcome to the July 22, 2025 Swampscot Select Board. We will, we are being recorded and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and our honoree tonight, Effie, will help us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Diane, do you have the... So, our first order of business tonight is a presentation of a proclamation to Effie Cobbitt. Sure, you can come to the microphone. Looks like you're all ready to go. And this is for your Girl Scout Gold Award. Thank you. Would you like to tell us about what it took to get there?
Sure. So, my Gold Award project is based in an area of Swampscot, right across from the middle school, in a land that was previously unable to be used, just a little bit of an area of woods that's part of the Muskrat Pond Conservation Area. And my thoughts for this project were that I wanted to be able to reclaim this area for Swampscot Public Community use. And I also wanted to be able to do two more things. One, I get rid of more invasive species in Swampscot. And two, make an area of land that you could have more natural unstructured play and where you could reconnect with nature in an area close to both Swampscot Middle School and Swampscot Elementary School. And I had so many people help me with this. For one, I had Tony and Marzie and all of the Swampscot Conservation Commission and Swampscot Conservancy. I had Suzanne as my lovely Gold Award advisor and they all helped me immensely. I had Mr. Gusta and Mr. Noonan and the DPW helped me remove some structures left over previously, which were the reason that this area couldn't be used by the public at all. And with many other things such as trash removal. And I, in addition to this physical area, worked with teachers in the Swampscot School System, in the middle school and elementary school level, to implement more curriculum on invasive species that were based in Swampscot specifically. So, our children can learn a little bit more about the natural world around them that they interact with on a daily basis.
Okay. Can we just ask you a couple of questions?
Of course.
So, when did you start in the Girl Scouts?
I started as a Daisy, so I was five years old.
And how many years did it take to get to Gold?
Well, for the Girl Scouts, there is the Bronze Award and Silver Award and the Gold Award. So, I did parts of my Bronze and Silver Award, but due to things such as my troop disbanding and COVID, I unfortunately never got to the stage where I was ordered with them. So, that made going for Gold all the more important to me. So, that started about three or four years ago. And the process was able to be officially started about a year ago.
So, this fall, we are going to be putting plaques up at Town Hall that will have the name of every Eagle Scout recipient and every Gold Scout recipient. So, we are going to have to take one of the plates and have your name engraved. But I think you'll be, will you be away at school?
I will be.
So, we might have to zoom you in.
Sounds good.
So, we'll find out what your schedule is, but you will, your name will be right up on there, okay?
Thank you so much.
Great.
Okay, so, I apologize for being tardy. But does anybody else have any questions before I read the awards? Okay, so, we have a proclamation recognizing your amazing incredible efforts. And this says, "Recognition of Gold Award Girl Scout, Effie Cobbitt. Whereas the rank of Gold Award Girl Scout is the highest honor that can be attained by a Girl Scout and takes years of dedication and commitment. And whereas Gold Award Girl Scout act as leaders and role models in the community. The Gold Award Girl Scout is a distinction that will follow you throughout your life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership qualities and commitment you have shown. And whereas your attainment of the rank of Gold Award Girl Scout involved removing unsafe outdoor exercise equipment at Muskrat Pond Conservation Area, removing trash and invasive species, building and installing a bench, the creation of unstructured play equipment made of natural materials such as parts from fallen trees and creating interpretive signs on invasive species and the nature play equipment. This major community service project will undoubtedly benefit all visitors to the Muskrat Pond Conservation Area for years to come. And now therefore be proclaimed that on behalf of the entire Select Board and the town of Swampscot, we do hereby congratulate and recognize you for your achievement of the rank of Gold Award Girl Scout and urge others to join us in extending congratulations. And witness, we have all signed our hands here too and affixed the great seal of the town of Swampscot, Massachusetts this 22nd day of July 2025."
Thank you.
Great job.
So, if you'll indulge us to take photographs because your parents will obviously want that. So, you guys come up and hold your award and Diane will take some pictures. And then why don't you guys take it first and then we'll begin to take one. This is an achievement for all. All right, you guys want to join us?
Yep.
Don't go. All righty.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would it be possible to move the Town Administrator's report to the end of the agenda? Just because we have 10 items that have to get in here, is that a possible, can I make a motion?
You absolutely can, sure. I don't have an issue with that. Anybody have an objection to moving it? No, Gino?
I'm good.
Okay.
I think the only downside is that Gino doesn't get to share with, I mean, a lot more people are around now than there are later. So, I, that's the only problem. I don't want to like lose the flow of like what you're sharing and stuff.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that need to speak too on their new and old business and I'm sure they can zoom in too. Yeah, we post it too.
I don't think we need to take a vote for me to reorganize the agenda. So, I'm happy to move the Town Administrator's report. So, we move to...
Don't go public comment.
Move to public comment, yes. Okay. So, anybody who has here for public comment, it's a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and your address before you speak. And I will set a timer and when you hear the timer go off, then I ask you to close public comment. Come right up to the mic, yes. Oh, sorry, before you start, I just want to mention the Select Board will not respond to public comment. Just, that is our tradition. Go ahead.
Testing? All right. Good evening. My name is Jill Sessery. I live at 15 Charlotte Road. I serve as Chair of the Recreation Commission, am a Town Meeting member and a volunteer with the farmer's market. I want to be clear that I am speaking tonight as an individual, not on behalf of the commission. What brings me here tonight is deep sadness and growing dismay at what I've come to understand about the hiring process for the new Recreation Director. There was every opportunity to handle this transition responsibly. With this being the department's busiest season, the town should have appointed an interim director, retained the outgoing director part-time and conducted a transparent search in the off-season after a permanent Town Administrator was in place. The outgoing director shared with me that a panel and broader engagement process had been suggested to the acting Town Administrator. That recommendation was not taken up. Instead, the acting Town Administrator proceeded hastily with an opaque decision that passed over a deeply experienced, widely respected internal candidate whose work has been central to the department's stability and success. This is someone who has shown up consistently, made personal sacrifices and gone above and beyond to keep things running. This is the kind of decision that demoralizes the very people who show up every day and often nights and weekends to serve this town. Swampscot is already facing serious staff retention challenges and finding volunteers who consistently show up and follow through is not easy. When we fail to value that kind of dedication, we don't just lose help, we lose trust and credibility. I have seen how demanding this work is and how rarely it's acknowledged. I urge this board to reflect on what this situation has signaled to town employees and volunteers. I find it frankly indefensible. That said, I'm stepping down from the Recreation Commission effective immediately. My resignation will be submitted this evening. My last day as a Market Manager will be August 3rd. While this was not an easy decision, it is the only one I can make in good conscience. Thank you and good night.
A little shorter. Debbie Friedlander, 159 Phillips. The reason that I'm coming, and I know that I'm going to speak for a lot of people, is we still continue to see some online ranker. We elected all of you. I know that there are personality issues. I know that there are policy issues. But we elected every single one of you so that you will work those out intelligently, professionally and mature. I would ask that personal attacks, please refrain from having those in public because while I know that all of you feel passionate and I know that all of you feel that your position is correct, I will speak just for myself at how it lands. It lands that every action has a reaction. That's a natural law. And the more you spend time attacking each other, it's less time you spend time on our issues. And please note that for some of you who may not like each other, maybe, or just don't like each other's policies or positions on what the town needs or doesn't need, many people voted for each of you. So, I just would ask that at times you take a breath and pause. I know that the body gets really riled up and it almost feels good to be angry, right? And you feel very passionate, but I'm just telling you as a resident of Swampscot, this is not landing well on me. So, I don't want to talk for anyone else. So, I would just ask that we try and... You guys are great. You're all smart. You're all dedicated and we all voted for you. So, that's it. And thank you. Thank you to the Select Board. Thank you.
Hi, Rachel Tera Dash, 71 Middle Sect Ave. I am up here to encourage you to please find a solution for the gap in Recreation Directors. As a parent of children who attend Park League, I would really hope that you can find a way to ensure that there is a Recreation Director for the entire time that children's programs are running, run by very lovely, capable, responsible teenagers, that there is a Rec Director in place to ensure that there is coverage for the entire time that you're running those programs. So, my understanding is there's a week or so gap. As a parent who entrusts my children to Park League, which is their absolute favorite camp, it's been incredible so far again this year. But please, please, please make sure that there is somebody who is overseeing that for the whole time. I've heard that there's, like, please. It's our kids. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Camerlango, 1 Bellevue Road, an interim Recreation Director. I've been the program coordinator for Swampscot Recreation for the last three years. I was one of the four candidates interviewed for the Recreation Director position that became available when Danielle Strauss announced she would be retiring effective July 10th. I was not chosen to be Swampscot's next Rec Director. Now, none of what I have to say is a reflection on how I feel about Charlotte, the incoming director. She'll do fine. I'm not here to be divisive. What I have to say isn't going to change the outcome for me, nor do I want it to. But it can certainly help protect my former colleagues and anyone else who intends to go through the hiring process with the town. If the residents of Swampscot don't hear my story, we're at risk of putting others through the same tumultuous process that I went through. When Danielle announced her retirement a little over two months ago, I started seeking answers about the hiring timeline because I knew it would impact the heavily scheduled calendar events and programs we were running this summer. The hiring process that I experienced was one of complete and utter disrespect, littered with discriminatory comments and breaches of confidentiality. It made me feel used, unheard and confused. For example, even though I pushed for a decision to be made sooner prior to the start of our busiest season, I was notified that I would not be the next Rec Director only 24 hours before Danielle's official retirement date. I sent an email on June 4th to our interim TA outlining the concerns I had with the hiring process and the breaches of confidentiality that took place. I stated in the email that it was a call for action, to which no action was subsequently taken. Not once did an employee or Select Board member request a vacancy review for the Rec Department where we would have discussed an appropriate plan of action so as to not interrupt the flow of programming or planning of events for the community. Throughout this process, I was asked to weigh in on the qualifications of candidates that had applied for the position who were in direct competition with me. I was shown the resumes and applications for multiple candidates who applied in an attempt to discourage me from applying for the Rec Director role, hoping I would accept a lesser role due to having a baby at home. When pushed as to why an announcement for the role was taking so long, the interim TA told me that it was a hard decision to make because, and I quote, "If I make a decision one way, I lose friends. And if I make a decision another way, I lose friends." All the while, I was being strung along. Given these events, it's hard not to draw certain conclusions. Is this simply just a situation where we have an interim TA or HR manager who are unfamiliar with hiring protocols? Or is this a situation where who you know and what you stand to gain from those relationships matters more? My ultimate hope is that by sharing my experience with this ordeal, we can right the wrongs for anyone who may go through the hiring process with the town of Swampscot. With the number of vacancies about to open up, this is a true concern.
Jackie, could you finish up, please?
I urge residents to start asking questions of municipal leaders and elected officials in town to better understand the processes that are in place and whether or not they are doing the work that needs to be done to ensure that candidates and employees of the town are treated fairly and respectfully. Thank you.
We have two hands up online, so we will take, I believe, BD, I'm sorry, MK is...
MK, you can speak.
Hello?
Aye.
You're all set.
Hello?
Just state your name and your address, please, and you can begin.
Hey, sure. Yeah, yeah, Mike Keller here, Pine Hill Road. Sorry, I'm driving. Put my camera on. But I just wanted to make some constructive criticism. When you got, when we, when you guys changed the Fisherman's Beach parking, I don't think enough awareness was made to the folks. I happened to ask a friend to come help me because I initially was my boat and he parked his car there and got a ticket. He's been a taxpayer for 35 years parking in that lot. And I went out early that morning and I didn't notice the new signs either. But somehow luckily I didn't get a ticket because I actually haven't got the beach sticker yet this year. But he did. So, I just think they should have been warnings first or when you start to change an area, I think there needs to be more outreach if that's happening. So, that was all, that's just my constructive criticism in the future. Because just to go from zero to 75 bucks the first day seems kind of rough for taxpayers to the town. And that's it. Thank you all for your time and appreciate it. Have a good meeting. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. And then Mr., is that Mr. Demento?
Hi, Bill.
Good evening. Bill Demento, 1008 Paradise Road. I cannot, I was not intending to say anything, but the only speakers go to the process and the lack of transparency in the town. And I'd suggest that this Select Board needs to address the issue of people getting up at public comment and then being absolutely stonewalled by the Select Board. These are some serious issues. You just filled a $100,000 position, $100,000, and you have no discussion whatsoever of anything. You'll never find out what really is going on unless somewhere or another you find a way to be truthful. You're going to hire a Town Administrator where the screening committee says it's the most important thing. And yet, these people are getting up and talking and the five of you, and with Gino, the six of you just sit there and look at them like nothing's happening. I really hope you reconsider this blank wall of people asking serious questions and you just sitting there and looking at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demento.
Madam Chair, I would, I would like the opportunity to respond to public comment.
We do not respond to public comment.
We typically do not respond to public comment, but there, there are exceptions and I would like the opportunity to speak now.
If you would like to speak at your Select Board time, that would be an appropriate time to do that. But if we all speak at public comment about every, I mean, you want to speak about this topic.
Yeah.
But there are other topics that are brought up that people might want to speak on, so I don't think it would be just at this point.
I am just, I am asking for...
Great. And I'm answering your request.
Okay.
And you may speak at Select Board time.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Are you going to take comments about water surorates during that time?
Yes, we will. Thank you. Please. The Select Board does not comment to public comment. So, we absolutely can speak on it during our Select Board time, but unless it's an agenda matter, the Select Board does not speak on topics not on the agenda until Select Board time. It's, it's been our policy. We can certainly discuss whether we'd like to change the policy going forward, but that's our policy.
What about having the Town Administrator report now? Maybe, maybe in some way, shape or form, that might be responsive to some of what has been discussed here.
Yep.
If you want to make a request, I, I don't have a problem when the Town Administrator wants to speak. So, if he wants to speak now and the will of the Board is that he speaks now, you can do so.
I just, I just want to go back to my, excuse me, I just want to go back to my original request is that we get on to new and old business. That's all. And then we deal with the rest of it at the end of the meeting. We have people here on the UV. We've got handbook stuff. We have Pine Street. There's a lot of work to be done here.
Okay, so, let me start with this first. Is there anybody else who wants to make public comment? Let me close public comment first.
Oh, this, Mike Keller hasn't seen it.
Okay.
Give him another minute?
He may, yes. Mike, if you could, you can have another minute going forward, please. State, just restate your name and your address, please.
This is the other Michael Keller.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just three minutes. Thank you.
I don't, I don't need three minutes. I just wanted to support Bill Demento's comment. I listen to a lot of these from afar and this particular... And this particular, um, topic involves our children, you know, I think it involves the process of how we hire internally. It's been some changeover in the, the board over the last five or so years, and I think it's just a good opportunity to respond sometimes. And having to listen to opening comments and wait so long for some of the responses. So just want to echo, uh, Bill Demento's comments there.
Okay. So we, there was a request to move the town administrator's report, which I granted. There's, if there's another request, I'll just take a vote of the body then. So if you want to make a motion to move the town administrator's report, I will consider a vote on that motion.
Sure, I'll, now we'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to get back to what the agenda was, town administrator's report.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so all those in favor of moving the town administrator's report back above new and old business?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
I, I, I also don't agree with it.
I don't, don't care.
This isn't, this is, this is, let's just, let's just...
Okay, so does a two-one-two vote go forward then? I abstained.
You abstained, yeah, then I guess we do the town administrator's report. And Danielle, I mean, I appreciate it, it looks and feels that way, but I do think this is an opportunity for Gino to be able to share what's going on, so.
We can have the same opportunity later, though, so to me, it's just...
I know, but to what, to what was just mentioned, I mean, you know, I know there are people here for other topics, I totally get that for sure. And there are people here for these topics too, and, and so, I mean, it's kind of a coin, a coin flip, you know, in that regard. So it just feels like just let's stick with, you know, what we're going to do and...
Go ahead, Gino.
Okay, so to the select board, I am pleased to offer the following report on programs and initiatives that are ongoing in the town of Swampscot. Okay, we'll start with, uh, I guess he just walked out, but there was a request last select board meeting to install a bike rack over at Abbott Park, and I was taking care of it the following day. It's kind of a lucky thing that we just happen to have one in stock, so it was an easy one to take care of. I was going to address Effie Corbett. She earned her Gold Award by reimagining Muscat Pond, but I think enough of that was said. The only part that wasn't added is that there's going to be a dedication on Saturday, August second, at ten o'clock at the middle school parking lot. Staff are working hard planning for the third annual Humphrey Street Block Party, scheduled for August ninth, noon to four. Street closes and a list of vendors and other pertinent information will be released soon. The TA search committee is seeking this week, is meeting this week an executive session at the Swampscot Elementary School. They will interview nine potential candidates, which I am not one of, just let everybody know that, because I know there's a lot of concern that they might not be doing a good job. The committee will forward up to five candidates to the select board. The select board has thirty days from the date of the names presented to make an offer to a candidate. Community development. Pine Street, a project eligibility letter from the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities confirms that the proposed project meets the eligibility criteria of E O H L C's funding programs, including the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Housing Stabilization Fund. This letter is a prerequisite for applying for funding and submitting a comprehensive permit to the Swampscot ZBA. Library. The new English learning language lounge. Conversation Circle begins on Monday, August fourth, at six thirty PM. Twenty-plus individuals have already pre-registered for the program. They may need to add another date. The summer reading program continues to be wildly popular. There has been a record-breaking attendance at several events. Senior Center, over fifty people attended the Boston By Ferry event last week, which is another overwhelming success. Heidi and Sabrina are working on a grant program to continue the Open Minds Through Art Program. Senior Center is working with the fire department to educate seniors on smoke detectors, as well as assisting them on getting their smoke detectors tested. An educational lunch and learn program on real estate tax exemption and tax deferral program is scheduled for August twentieth at the Senior Center. Recreation, Wednesday, Swampscot by the Sea concert will feature B-Side Hustle. Coastal Brewery, The Hungry Nomad, and Isabella's Ice Cream will be on site. Next Wednesday's concert, July thirtieth, will feature Moose Juice, a Grateful Dead tribute band. Granite Coast Brewery, Chicken and the Pig, and Uncle Joey's Cannoli will be on hand. Concerts start at six PM. This week's Thursday movie night on Town Hall On will feature Grease. Come and enjoy this classic movie brought to you by Sam Walker's American Tavern. Police, we have some hiring updates. One author, one officer has resigned unfortunately and has transferred over to Linfield PD. She will be missed. On the positive side, a conditional offer has been sent to a lateral transfer. Open to receive that response within the next couple of days. A second potential lateral transfer will be interviewing with the interim TA May, within the next couple of weeks. A third potential candidate is currently undergoing a background check. If all three of these come through, we'll be one police officer shy of having a full staff. Additionally, there are twenty-five to thirty applicants that have been applied for the Swampscot Police Department's physical fitness test. Test dates are Wednesday, July twenty-third, and Sunday, August tenth. Finally, Officer Kevin Reen and SRO Ryan Wilson conducted a bicycle safety day. Helmets were donated by the police department, and six bicycles were donated by Charlie Patios. All right, circling back to some traffic updates. Elm Place is now resident parking only and is a one-way from the southbound side to the northbound side. Southbound being the Westcott property side, it's a one-way. Pittman Road is now resident parking only, outside of the designated parking spots for the Westcott. Westcott parking spots are marked, line and signage has been installed. Hillcrush Circle, Upland Road, Maple Ave, Burpee Terrace, and Burpee Road are now resident parking only. Signs have been or will be installed on all of those aforementioned streets. Most of yous know Speed Bump was recently installed on Burpee Road and has resulted in positive feedback, unlike the Stetson Road speed bumps. Columbia Street is resident parking only on the residence, residential side from Borough Street down to Beach Ave. No parking, hit a corner signs have been installed on Essex Ave for safety reasons. Handicap parking spot has been added to Borough near the entrance to Darty Circle, and a handicap parking spot was added in front of the library. At the intersection of Middlesex and Norfolk Ave, eight no parking hit a corner signs were recently installed, I believe, yesterday. They've been installed fifteen feet from each intersection per the police. And finally, something that was addressed a little earlier, recreation parking only signs were installed at the Fisherman's Beach parking lot. Unfortunately, parking passes for S Y C employees were belatedly delivered to Swampscot Yard Club, resulting in parking tickets being issued prematurely. Those tickets will obviously be resold. Under mention that. And then finally, a trash update. Taking up a lot of my time, but trash, it's been going well. I think we're one of the fortunate communities right now because our trash is being picked up. And all five trash routes were completed last week in a timely fashion. Obviously, one of the downsides of that is we did not have recycling pickup. The reason I decided to do that was typically we have two trucks come into town each week, one for recycling, one for trash. The new drivers don't know the routes. They're being hinted leaving the transfer station each day. So the two trucks, the one that was committed to recycling is helping out with the trash. That's the only way we could get the town completed. So most of yous are well aware, DPW Yard is open for recycling pickup Friday, three to seven, Saturday, ten to four, Sunday, ten to four as well. That's been received very well. One of the issues going on down there is residents are bringing their trash. We're going to ask residents not to bring their trash to the DPW Yard this weekend, only because it's being picked up anyways. And unfortunately, it's one of those situations where a few bad apples spoil the whole bunch. People are taking advantage of it and bringing, cleaning out their basements, garages, and whatever. But other than that, it's been working well. As I said, received very well. The residents of Swampscot, unbelievably nice, bringing the staff water, buying cold cut platters, pizzas. As I said, it's been received very well, and it makes me happy to be a resident of Swampscot. So maybe, the one other thing I need to add is there's no metal pickup or drop off at the DPW Yard this Saturday. Because if you've been down there the last weekend, it's a circus down there, and there's no way we can collect metal. So we're going to delay that a month. The other unfortunate thing is, right now, no yard waste pickup this week. If everything goes well and people just drop off recycling this weekend, I would hope to open it up to yard waste next weekend with recycling. That's my report.
Can I add one? Can I just encourage everybody, please sign up for Town Hall On. I can't, I can't encourage you enough. It would spread the word, the more area.
Well, maybe. And I know there have been a few issues with traffic. Kind of lost track of it on Friday. I didn't have a police detail out there. Police did show up to assist me with traffic. Saturday and Sunday, we had a police detail coming in. So what we're asking residents to do is if you're coming into the DPW Yard, we want you to come down
Thank you, Danielle.
from the Marblehead side, so I guess you'd be heading southbound and turning to the yard that way. What happened this weekend, there were cars on Friday, cars were lining up on the center line of Paradise Road, and cars were passing on both sides. Thank you for the police for getting an officer down there as quickly as they could.
Um, I just have a couple of things about the metal recycling. Will there be a, a alert that goes out to remind people not to show up with metal for metal recycling?
We sent one that day.
Oh, we did? Okay, great. I'm sure I got it.
Did you?
Um, that's okay.
Yeah, but...
And then for the traffic updates too, I know we, we sent one out related to the Fisherman's Beach parking lot, but some of these, I think a lot of these neighborhoods were engaged in the conversation, so we, there might be less, um, shock that some of these are happening. But if you're not a resident of these neighborhoods, you might not know that this conversation has been ongoing. So maybe we send sort of a traffic alert update or something. Go ahead, David.
Just about, just about trash, um, I got a few things, but, uh, trash. So right now, we're not getting recycling pickup. That's part of, that line item is part of our, is part of our contract.
Correct.
Technically, Republic is in default of their agreement with the town of Swampscot. What actions are we taking, if any, to address this? This has been a, a major point of concern for a number of residents. People want to recycle. We've had town events, um, you know, where they're, you know, where historically we have been recycling, but we were unable to do so. So I know, I know that has been a question that's been asked of me, and I just think that we have an opportunity to answer, to answer that publicly, get that information out there as to what we're going to do, what we're looking at, if, if we're evaluating potentially, you know, what... Just, can you give us a little bit more detail, Gino, and then I have some additional things?
Yeah, as far as recycling goes, is leverage, obviously, we're not, we're not paying them for July because we haven't gotten any services from them. I also had trying not pay them the June bill, so we would have some leverage, because as you said, they're not providing the service. We are, and they're also going to end up paying for all the DPW overtime. We've been hauling the trash away. I was asked by other town managers, administrators, and mayors, I meet with them regularly, there's fourteen communities. I didn't sign up on the lawsuit because I believe I've had very good communication with Republic. They've helped us well with the dumpsters. Maybe they should be settling, I don't want to get into the issues of why it's not, but they have been very receptive to us with providing us the dumpsters. And we're going to reconcile with them at the end.
Got it.
And then, does this weigh in on, the trash contract expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, do we hold them against, uh, going on strike?
So on that, sorry, on that note, you're keeping, somebody's keeping track of all the DPW workers, the police details, every incurred cost that we've had.
All the dumpsters, exactly, everything. I'm tracking everything.
Can we, well, can we stay on that topic?
Yeah, go ahead, use that.
Yeah, please.
If we don't join the lawsuit, um, do we lose any leverage, though, in terms of recouping these costs?
I don't think so. I talked to Tom McInanian about it, and he represents other communities that didn't sign up for the lawsuit. I just think the majority of them that signed up were all cities that had mayors. And had something to do with maybe them all wanted to be reelected.
So a number of, a number of them have just, they have new contracts. We're at the end of our contract. We are in a very, very favorable contract, so if we go to get out of that contract, Republic is going to be extremely happy that we would get out. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a pretty touchy thing for us.
You're talking about the rates we pay to get rid of our cycle and trash. We have a very favorable contract right now.
I had, I had some additional...
I'm not sure if you want to say that publicly.
Well, it's public anyway.
Public contract is public.
Public concession of it.
Um, before, does anybody have anything else related to...
Yeah, I, I, no, 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 not trash.
Okay.
I, I just want to say, like, really, thank you. I mean, you, you know, it's been a very fluid situation, and your responsiveness and everyone's responsiveness about it has been, I think, in the, in the context of a lot of adjusting, uh, pretty, pretty darn good. Uh, and what's happened at DPW and what you're doing on the weekends and all of that stuff, I think we are fortunate to be in the position we're in, so.
And that point too, I do want to acknowledge, um, thank you, and thank you to the DPW, but thank you to Diane also, because she has been really diligent in terms of getting the word out, sending out the emails, sending out information, and that's been critical, that we communicate. And thank you to Solid Waste, Wayne Spritz has also been very helpful and actively involved in the process. And I think that a lot of people are under the misconception because, you know, it's not discussed ad nauseam that we're not thinking about it, we're not doing things about it, we're not working behind the scenes. It is a very fluid situation, and I really, you know, commend the way that you've addressed it, and really, your guys, everybody has been nothing but respectful and helpful. And, you know, I appreciate all of it.
Just to put it in con, context, so we've done it for three weekends. The first weekend, we filled up three dumpsters, and it was just strictly recycling. The next one, when we decided to take both, we filled up nine forty-yard dumpsters, a DPW ten-wheeler, and three six-whealers. This past weekend, we filled up thirteen forty-yard dumpsters. And I got to thank the trash companies that I'm calling it Saturday night, asking them to come in on a Sunday morning to empty three, because I know we're overloaded.
Right.
And I, you know, Truscio, I got to give kudos to him.
I mean, and we reached out to Salem, to Marblehead, I personally reached out to Lynn to get us the ability to dump at the transfer station. So i- it's not like we've, you know, all just kind of sat on our hands with this thing, and, and, you know, Mary Ellen and I run calls with, with, you know, Solid Waste, trying to find ways and people and connections to make their, to have there be an option for people in town to do something other than just sit there on a holiday weekend and store your trash in your garage or whatever, so, um, so thank you.
The other update is Diane, Diane is posting, every time there's an update, Diane is posting on the town website. So I tell people all the time, if you have a question, just go to the town website and just click, and you'll have the latest information.
Yeah.
So it's, it's right there.
Presently, the message board is right outside the DPW Yard, flashing right now.
Yeah.
Recycling only, no metal drop off, no yard waste pickup, till a date to be determined. So I'm hoping we can resolve that next week.
And then we can, we can do a robo-call and follow up with, with that, just to notify. I, I just think more communication on something like this with basic, with a basic city service and this, and this disruption and confusion, I think over-communicating is certainly, uh, important. So thank you, Gino, and thank you to the DPW. I did have traffic questions.
Yep.
So are we going to get an update? I, I know there was a, you know, I know the, there was a, you know, there were certainly some, some issues, some concerns from, from a resident of Stetson Ave.
Yep.
Just about speed. I know the, the speed bump that was placed on Burpee Road has slowed things down considerably.
Yep.
I know I'm going well under twenty. Uh, when I, when I come to that, I look at the, I look at the board, and, you know, usually it's about eighteen. I know we had talked about a twenty-four mile, mile per hour average. I would like to get an update as to, as to how that's impacted speed. You know, maybe that's, maybe that's just a quick memo from, uh, from Officer Reen. Uh, he did a good job last time.
Yep.
A couple, so I'm just concerned that there are continued speeding issues on Stetson. You had made a mention of, uh, of the fact that there were some complaints. Um, people can complain, but they're complaining about safety. And I, I, I put safety paramount over someone's, you know, being inconvenienced by speed bumps. So I, I do want, I do want to have that conversation continued.
Yep.
I, I just, I, I think it's incredibly, uh, I think it's incredibly important. So I want to make sure that we're, that we're addressing, uh, public safety. And one of the, one of the issues that I also noticed is that slip lane, uh, at Mon... at Monument Ave and Burl with that crosswalk. So, previously, we had, we had some type of barrier that really kept the pedestrians safe. There's tons of people that are crossing during the afternoon, the evenings, the mornings, on the weekends. And I just think that's a, that's a really dangerous crossing right there. Just sometimes the way the, the sun is hitting, is hitting the windshields. You can't see clearly or properly. It's a long cross. So, I just want to make sure that the police and, and our public safety officials are doing everything that they can to keep residents and visitors to Swampscott safe.
Right. So, currently, we have the delineation markers there. But if the board wants it, I can put the Jersey barriers up.
Yeah, we had Jersey barriers last time. I thought that worked well. So, you did not, so you had people that were lined up, and they were not, you know, slipping into that, onto, onto the side. So, I, I, I would, I would like the, I would like the thoughts of, you know, of our traffic safety officials.
I think we've talked about that. We're going to try to look into a grant because what I'd like to do is just bump out the curb and, so it's permanent, similar to what we've done. And so, maybe we can chase something like that.
Fantastic. I just, I just want to make sure that it's safe, that it's safe for residents and visitors, you know, this summer and this fall, and as soon as possible.
I can get the Jersey barriers out there this week.
I just will say, in regards to Stetson, we've had conflicting neighborhood requests that maybe a, a community meeting is in order, like we had for residents related to the Westcott. And then there was direction because we had the voice of the community heard at that meeting. And so, maybe instead of wavering back and forth, we can just notice them and I'll ask them to come to a meeting and have a conversation rather than assuming we know what they want or why they want it or how they want it.
Oh, and, and Gino, one other thing. There were, there were some questions that I had about public ways and private ways.
Yep.
Have we, I know we've, I know every so often in, you know, in town meeting, we accept private ways and they become public ways.
That's right.
Can you give us an update on what roads are in town are still, are still private ways? And which, and if any, and which roads that we may have accepted? Is there some kind of process or procedure that has to happen post-town meeting?
No, well, post, I think it was in 1995 and 96, we accepted a list of roadways, which I can email you tomorrow. And the reason we did that was for Chapter 90 funding.
Yeah.
The more roadway, the more, the miles. But then there was a couple of them, like, that I can think of off the top of my head. Walnut Road from number 45 to 60 is unaccepted. Gloop's Point from the Pillars Down, unaccepted roadway.
But I know we had accepted, I think, Supreme Court.
Oh, yes. Recently, we did that.
Yeah, but I, I just, I just want to make sure that we're following that, that we're following that process. So, once town, once town meeting approved that, that we're, that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's to making sure that we're qualifying for that Chapter 90 funding. That's all.
Fair point. I'll work on that because I know the select board, I'm not sure if town meeting ever voted to us, except Supreme Court.
No, select board did.
Select board did.
Only the select board had.
Right.
Okay, we do need to get.
It was based on them doing all those improvements. I made them pave the roadway.
Yeah.
It cost them significant money.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do need to get to the root of the, of the old and new business here. So, if there are not any further comments, we will move on.
Hold on. I just do, I do have two questions. Is, one is, I want to echo your Stetson Ave because I received an email on that again today, and we've got to get back to that. And the other thing is, on the hiring process, on the laterals.
Yep.
Well, one concern that I have is that if it's going to take a few weeks to get interviews, I think we're going to lose out on some of these laterals. If we could possibly escalate that or even.
Well, one of them I interviewed, and I know he's coming over.
Okay. And then any others that you have on that?
And then the second lateral, Rubens interviewed him, and is moving on to me.
Okay. So, you're going to talk to him in the morning?
This week, for sure.
That'd be great. All right, that's it for me.
I'd like to ask him for one clarification on something quickly.
Yep.
Gino, on the rec director.
Yep.
Not, not everything about it, but just in terms of, can you assure the public that we have the requisite coverage over the next several weeks to ensure that the programs happen and happen safely?
I will promise you we'll have that.
Thank you, Doug. All right, moving on to new and old. Danielle, you didn't have anything?
I don't have anything, no.
To the, the first item is the UV pilot update and discussion. Sorry, say again?
I need a mic.
Oh, a mic. That's why I didn't hear you, because you don't have one.
Hi, so, and we're not alone here.
By Gino to come and help give an update on the UV pilot. We're a little more than halfway through the pilot period, which was Memorial Day to Labor Day weekend. We have no, no firm conclusions, but we have lots of observations and learnings. We've faced a lot of operational issues, which you've probably heard at least reduced to the term seaweed. But we have had some others as well. But we also have been working very hard to gather as much data as we can. We have a team of samplers led by a supervisor who are testing seven days a week. So, we are out there testing five different locations, including the Lynn and Swampscott culvert, when there is flow going through the pipe from the, from the culvert, through the pumps, through the pipe to the UV. We test the affluent tank of the UV system and the affluent tank of the UV system. And we are testing Swampscott section of Kings Beach daily because that is only tested weekly by the town per DPH requirements. And we wanted to see what happens on a daily basis because DCR is testing Lynn portion of Kings on a daily basis. We're seeing a lot of correlation between the test results that we're getting and kind of what our expectations were. And also between the results that we're getting and what DCR is getting in the water. DCR is also testing, for the duration, when we are running, they are testing the Swampscott outfall down at the water, down at the beach level. Because when everything is working properly, there shouldn't be any flow coming out of the Lynn side because we're trapping all of that and shipping it through. There is flow. If you go down there, you'll see flow. A lot of that is being driven by the sand that gets pushed up into the culvert and then forms a pool on the downstream side of the weir walls that we've built in. So, I know I'm kind of throwing a lot of terms and information. I just want to give you kind of a general outline of where we are and let you ask questions. We have seen, you know, things that we expected, such as when it rains, which fortunately, it hasn't rained that much this season. We've been fortunate. But when it does rain, a lot of junk comes down the stormwater drains and either gets trapped by the screens that we've put in to block the seaweed from coming up. Then the junk that's coming down gets stopped. Or it does go, some of it goes through the system when we find plastic bags, cigarettes, plastic bottles in the UV tanks. And none of that is helpful. And I actually think that the, our strike right now is not helping because there's more recyclables just sitting out on the street for people who aren't bringing it to DPW yard. So, I think we're seeing more as a result, just a fact of life. But when that rain forces everything out of those pipes, we find that the tanks get very dark. They get very smelly. The, what we call turbidity, the junk that's in the water goes up, and the QVT, which is a measure of how well the UV light penetrates, goes down. So, they're inversely related. And you will see from the spreadsheet or from the charts, the graphs that Matt has put up on the UV pilot site that's hosted by the City of Lynn, you can see that in our test results. You can see that if there's, if there's been rain, then the effectiveness goes down for a little while, and then it picks right back up very quickly. So, we're very encouraged by what we're seeing. It's been a lot of work. There's been a lot of, Gino can attest, I'm sure, a lot of operational challenges. We had seaweed issues. We've had algae issues. We've had the trash issues. We've had generator issues in terms of just things going down and having to call someone in to come and fix it. Regular maintenance of the tank, the pumps, the hoses leading to the pumps, the pipes going from the pumps to the UV, and the screens that we've put in to trap anything coming up and down. So, we're, we're halfway through. We've had, about 70% of the days have been operational. So, out of, since we started on June 2nd. We had a little bit of downtime in the beginning. We had a little bit of downtime last week. We were down last weekend because, because of all the debris that came down from the two heavy days of rain on the 7th and 8th of this month. We got some backups in the Swampscott system. So, we needed to shut everything down and let that flush out. These are things that, you know, are part of a pilot. It's part of basically an experiment to see. We know UV can kill bacteria, but we don't know how it will perform in this environment, a tidal environment. And the people that make the UV system, it's a company called Trojan out of Canada. When the tech was here setting things up, he said, you know, we're really excited about this because we've never put a system in a tidal location like this. We don't know how it's going to respond to the seaweed and the algae and the other things that you're going to come up with to challenge, to challenge us. So, that's kind of where we are.
Thank you, Liz. Board, questions, comments, concerns?
So, I don't know if you kind of buried the lead in there or you didn't want there to be a lead. You know, in terms of like, except for all the, you know, things that don't work, of course, like fundamentally, are we seeing, like, you test, you know, the flow that's coming in and the flow that's coming out, and the UV is actually working at scale?
Yes.
When the system's working?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The only time it doesn't clear out the bacteria has been, I think there's two or maybe three days where it didn't take it down to essentially zero. Less than 10 is, you know, essentially zero was when we had heavy rain. Yes.
So, how much rain is, where's the tipping point there, Liz? What, how much rain would cause this system, you know, to, to, to become ineffective?
We are, there's still research to be done on that because it's not just how much, it's how quickly. So, we had like, I don't know, a little over, really not very much, less than a half an inch of rain, like a little bit over a tenth of an inch. But it came in 20 minutes on June 28th. And that was enough to just flush everything out because it had been dry before that and, and, and cause a slowdown in effectiveness. We had, now, as I said, half an inch on two different days last week. And, and that was also a problem, but it didn't overwhelm the system. We didn't have to shut anything down. We, until it started kind of filling up the culvert. And we, we had to kind of let it, let it slide out. But in terms of when the rain was happening, it didn't cause a problem. Sunday night, I was there waiting to see what would happen in the culvert because we were, you know, we didn't know if the thunderstorm would overwhelm the system or not. It's hard to predict. We were right, right in between the sort of two bands of storms. And, and it was fine. So, it, it really depends.
And then just high level, how often, how much, how much more often has Kings Beach been open this year as opposed to last year?
That is hard to say. I think it's been open a little bit more than 80% this year so far. Last year was 70, closed 75%. The year before that, closed 91%. So, anecdotally, I, I didn't run those numbers before I got here because we're still, you know, in the midst of it. But it has definitely been open more this year. We've lucked out with the weather. That's been helpful.
Yeah.
But it's, so for example, it was closed for seven or eight days.
Yes, exactly. You have to rain adjust, I think, because.
Yeah, you do. You do.
Very rainy summer last year, and so we had a high amount of closure. So, it.
And two years ago, it was through the wet.
Leave people to believe that, you know, the golden ticket is the UV pilot. It may be, but we don't, we don't have all the data to know it yet.
Right. We aren't drawing any conclusions. But what we did find is after the rain on the 7th and 8th, there was a geomine issue, right? So, because the spikes in bacteria at the beach, the beach was closed on the Lynn side for, I think, eight days because they busted the geomine. And it, and that's hard to explain. But what it means is it, it's a trailing five-day average. But it's a different, it's not an additive average. It's a productive additive average. And once you are higher than the geomine, which is only 35, not 104, once you're higher, it's hard to get back. So, for example, Swampscott, Kings Beach is above the geomine. And it, it will, because we test weekly, it's probably going to take two or three more weeks to get back. So, that section of the beach is still closed. I think that if we, and we were having our generator issues, and then we had our excess water issue. If we had been able to treat all the water once the initial surge came through, I think it would have opened the beach sooner. I can't prove that, but I believe it.
And, and Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of people that I'm talking to are, you know, getting excited about this and thinking like, oh, the beach is always going to be open if this works. And, you know, we're still, even if this works perfectly, if we have a rainfall, we're still going to have the 24, 48 hours where there's going to be other reasons why the beach is going to have to be closed. There's still CSOs, other reasons why the system's not going to solve everything.
No, it doesn't solve everything.
Right.
But I think it will open the beach up quicker.
Quicker.
After a rainy day.
I think the other part of the pilot is to understand scalability, cost, what size. If, so, we, if we determine the pilot works, then what it has to look like to work on a grand scale consistently and not have a lot of these issues that we don't.
Right.
Have Liz signed up for the next 50 years going to clean out the seaweed for us. So, we need to figure out how we solve some of these problems that we're catching under the pilot. If we're looking at a permanent structure, cost, placement, all those kinds of things. And it's not just us. It's us in conjunction with the City of Lynn. So, there's a lot of factors that still, even if we find out, yep, it cleaned the water, there's a ton of hurdles that still have to be contemplated and understood before we even think about this being the solution.
Yeah, we had our first meeting since we started the pilot with the DEP and EPA today. And they had a lot of similar questions and a lot of good feedback. But they were, I, I would say, I think they're impressed. I think they were skeptical, but I think they are impressed by what they're seeing and what we've been able to accomplish.
The first thing they noted during the conversation was, we know UV will treat the water. There's no question.
Right.
It's all the other issues we've encountered.
Right, right.
Which leads me to my next. All right, yes. What I wanted to bring to your attention is, Liz said, there's been challenges along the way. I've had separate conversations with the mayor of Lynn and Kleinfelter as we were committed to initially, they thought it was going to be an $800,000 project. It's now gone over that a little bit, and they've come back to me. You're shocked about that? So, I said, obviously, I can't answer this question, but this would be a select board question. They're looking for another $20,000 from the Town of Swampscott. Some 10,000 that it would have been to pay Kleinfelter for all the extra work they've encountered with the seaweed and everything else. And the other 10,000, which I think might be a little high, it was for the seaweed issue. I mean, excuse me, the sound blankets we put around to deflect the noise.
Oh, I, I'm glad you brought up the sound blankets. Because, not the sound blankets, but the artwork that's happening there. It's, it's very deterrent to your sightline when you're at those stop signs.
Oh, I love it.
I'm glad you love it, and it's, it might be beautiful. But from a safety perspective, I've come a couple, a couple of times to the fencing and could not see actually around the fencing. You have to inch out.
Correct.
Pretty far.
Because of the blankets or because of the?
No, I'm sorry. It just made me think about, I, I think it's, some of it's because of those.
Units.
The murals?
Murals.
Well, the murals.
Oh, okay.
But they're on top of the, like, you can't see through the fencing, right? So, if you could see through the fencing, you'd have.
You can't see the, you won't see through the fencing though, anyway, because of the blanket.
This was an idea like beyond walls in Lynn, how they did it.
Yeah.
And others have complained that it's a distraction too, because now you're driving. You want to see what the mural is like. If it's already narrowing.
I just want to make sure there's not been any other safety concerns.
Yep.
Brought up and just maybe, because the stop sign's on the fencing. It's not in front of the fencing. So, if you stop at the fencing, you can't really see either way. So, you actually have to stop after the stop sign in order to have a line of vision.
We had one in the street that got hit a couple times.
Yeah.
We can look at where the, we can, we can have them look at the placement of the stop signs.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, Brian Drummond, 153, running the street. And I have two issues.
Yeah. Brian Drummond, 153, running the street. And I have two issues that I'd like to bring up on the project. One is, if you bring the data up, and if you look at the data, the Swambscut inflow data, a third of the time, we're below one oh four bacteria level, a third of the time, we're above, and a third of the time, there's no data. And I think we have to get data on the Swambscut inflow every day. And the problem is, if the, the pump is turned off when the level is six inches or less behind the wear wall. And if you got a pole and a scoop, which Gino has, because they've done that to gather water sample to, which they, they haven't done before, you can get the inflow data for every day. And I think it's, for Swambscut, I think it's important to get that data. So, DPW would help, have to help Liz, but as the Board of Public Works, I would ask the Select Board to encourage the DPW to get that sample so that Liz can get the data bacteria every, every day. Because what you're seeing is that the Lynn level is basically five times bacteria level than the Swambscut level. It, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of work that maybe has to be done on the Swambscut side to get us below one oh four. And the data, I'd like the spreadsheet, please?
This is all I have.
You don't have the spreadsheet?
Nope. Like I said, I have
It's on the Board of Health, it's on their Board of Health.
I don't know how to do that.
Can I just, can I please just respond?
No, let me just finish. And then, the, the, you know, so the Lynn side is about five times more than Swambscut bacteria level, and when the combined flow was over ten thousand bacteria units is when the UV system did not work. And so, that's going to be an issue down the road that at very high level, it, it doesn't work. The second point I'd like for the Select Board and the DPW Board to know is that with the wear wall is three feet high, there's a float system and the pumps turn off at six inches. And as the water fills up behind the wear wall at two and a half feet, the pumps turn on, float. And they stay on all the way through high tide and below high tide. And the wear wall is three feet, high tide can go to four and a half feet. So, all during the high tide cycle, you're pumping the ocean. And when you're pumping the ocean, you're pumping in all the seaweed and all the crap and all this sort of stuff. And I think you're wasting fuel also, you know. So, I, I believe it should be set up at a two and a half feet, where when the tide, when the water gets to the wear wall level, that the pump turns off, and it stays off all during the high tide cycle, and then turns on once the tide gets below the wear wall, so you're not sucking in all that seaweed. And the, you know, I think it, I think you'll save money, fuel cost, and you'll, you'll have less clogging of, of your pipes. And so, I'd like, maybe if you agree with that, to send a letter to somebody to have the pumps off, because I can't figure out who's in charge of the project, and I don't know who to talk to and get anything through. But I think the pumps should be off when the tide goes over the wear wall.
Thank you.
I think you know who's in charge.
I don't know.
Sure you do.
So, I'm, I'm baffled by this. So
You and I, we had a conversation, he's got some valid points, but some of them
Sure.
don't make a lot of sense to me. And I said this to your face earlier there, so I'm not hurting his feelings. There's a screen, we, we installed a screen that stopped the seaweed. We've, we've made these upgrades a long way, so
Right.
It's really not, and the whole pump concept is, it's a float system. So, when water gets to six inches, that's when it kicks on, right? We're not going to put it down on the bottom and suck up everything, the debris that's on the bottom. That's why it's at six inches.
Mayoral Chair, can I suggest we're in the weeds?
Yeah.
Let's move on.
Who is this? Who is this?
Get the data sample every day.
Can I please, if you want to that one?
Wait a second, guys, please, one moment. So, we have heard your comment, appreciate it. We will get some additional information if it can't be answered now, and we will figure out if and how we proceed with the commentary. Obviously, that's not something any of us have expertise on right now.
Absolutely not.
And we're a little bit in the weeds on it.
We can continue this conversation offline.
Okay, that would be, I think that would be great.
And if it does make sense, I will do it.
Perfect.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Liz, did you have any additional comment, or you're good?
Yes. Once the water level in the Swambscut culvert gets down below six inches, what is down there, if you can imagine, first of all, it's like ten feet below grade, right? Someone has to climb down in to get it. We're not asking our sampling team to climb into the culvert through a hatch, number one. Number two, I'm not asking them to lean over and dip out of that either. Three, I don't think it's a good use of DPW time, or really anyone's time, because the six inches that are way down at that bottom are a soupy mix of some seawater, some flow from the culvert, trash, you know, probably bacteria that's maybe growing on the walls. I mean, it is not worth it. It is not worth it. So, that's number one. And number, and I forgot number two.
Okay.
All right.
There is just, so we've had this discussion, so I'm a little frustrated. It is not, and we, and we have, we have talked to the consultants, we have talked to the DEP and the EPA. It, it is not worth the, we have, we, we are all working super, super hard under difficult conditions. So, we are not looking to add things that we don't think are going to add value. So, we are going to be making decisions about what we think is a good use of people's time, whether it's the DPW time, or the team's time, whether it's safe, and whether it will add value. So, we are very cognizant of that. We're not ignoring anything. We are pulling all the information together and trying to make the best decisions. Number two is, the Lynn side has three pumps, and it's almost, I check it, once, twice, sometimes three times a day, both sides in the culvert. It, it doesn't ever even get up to the wear wall. There may be some splash over, but they are pumped down well below the level of the wear wall all the time. And Swambscut is two.
Okay, very good. I think the details of this should be worked out between the consultants and the teams who are putting it together. If there's issue with it, we will happily send us an email. We'll happily look into it, Gino and team. But we don't want to get too, nine of us are experts in this, so. If there are no additional questions from the board, does any, do we want to help Gino give some feedback to the City of Lynn regarding the additional funding request?
Thank you.
No, absolutely not. No. That's my feedback for the twenty thousand dollars.
I think we could maybe
Sorry.
value Liz's time and tell them they're already getting a discount for services rendered by our wonderful
And Matt.
And Matt, by our wonderful community. And I don't think, I mean, I was very clear when I voted to support the UV pilot that this is it, and make the best of it with the money you're getting, because you're not getting anymore. So, I would be disingenuous to say, "Yes, now, let's give them some more," in my seat.
Well, uh, uh, maybe I'll be the somewhat contrarian. I mean, I, of course, do I want to give more money? No. But, you know, this does happen in projects, right? And there have, there have been things that have come up, right? And it's, it's not shocking. And I was actually, the only thing I'm shocked about is you only said it was twenty thousand dollars. I actually thought you were going to say it was a lot more than that. Now, on the other hand, we're only halfway through the summer, so we don't know what it's all totally going to be, right? And I assume that's like our half, the twenty thousand or whatever. So, I think it would be helpful to kind of itemize this and understand really where we're headed overall. I don't know if there's, is there a timing urgency, really critical urgency? So, I think, you know, I, I would, I would still entertain what we need to do in that regard, because I do, we do need to continue to be a good partner in that regard, so.
I would, I would go and talk to the engineers that just didn't realize there was
Seaweed?
seaweed from the seawater. I think maybe they would offer a discount, but I am an absolute no.
Okay, straw poll. We'll tell you that answer, Gino. So, we'll get some additional information if we want to consider it.
Knowing what the, I was kind of aware what this would be. So, the other option, I had given them is just to cut the pilot short. If they really thought they needed to, then you could save that twenty thousand dollars on the total of the pumps and the generator, but
Reduce it by a week, whatever.
All right.
So, if the answer's no, that's the other option.
Sorry.
Let's get more information.
Let's get more information. Yeah. Um, okay. If that concludes this conversation, thank you both very much for all your time.
Thank you, Liz.
And Gino, on this matter. Discussion and possible vote of fiscal year twenty-six water and sewer rates. We have Patrick here. Thank you for joining us, Patrick.
Good evening. Patrick Letty, Town Treasurer. I am here tonight to talk about the FY26 water and sewer rates. We met on July 8th last to discuss this, and there were a couple action items outstanding that you asked of me to help you make a decision. One of those was to research some of the other policies that other municipalities have regarding the level of retained earnings they keep in their water and sewer funds. I've done that. I collected those and put them on a sheet in your packet. Just took a sample of what was readily available, and there's a pretty wide range. I found Marblehead with five to seven percent of budget, or on the other end, Salem at twenty-five percent of prior year budget. So, quite a range. We fall at twenty percent of our budget based on our financial policies that were adopted by you and the Finance Committee several years ago. Also, I was asked to research any potential relief that can be given to those that may be unable to afford their water and sewer bills. Specifically, I found a solution that could be accomplished where we could solicit voluntary contributions from ratepayers on the quarterly water and sewer bill, and that would go into a special fund that could then be used to provide relief on almost an application and abatement-type process, similar to what we have for taxes. So, that would require a special legislation, and there's a draft there with the language that could be moved forward if we wanted to provide that avenue to the ratepayers.
Is this like, I'm sorry, is this like a roundup your bill, and then it goes?
Almost. So, other towns have this for tax bill, water sewer bills, where you get a little check-off box somewhere on your tax bill, and you write in an amount, and you would add that to your payment, and that would go into this special fund dedicated for that purpose. And it usually serves people who are elderly or disabled of a certain lower income to be determined in the policies of the fund.
And, and the fund grows, the money doesn't roll into free cash or anything? The fund stays?
Nope. It's a special revenue account, separate. The earnings, any interest, stay in that fund and go towards the purpose. I checked that with DOR.
Patrick, can I ask you a question on that while we're on it?
Go ahead.
I don't know if you want to kind of address these things individually, but you do have, that we have to set up a committee to oversee this? Is that required?
Yeah, so I
The model language you got?
We can, obviously, if the board chose to advance this to town meeting, the language can be reworked. Council hasn't looked at this. This is amalgamation of other similar legislation that exists.
Perfect.
So, we just need to put this on another agenda to go for the second time, so we can advance it to special town meeting?
If we decide that's the direction people want to go in.
I think, I think it's a great direction. My two cents, I'm supportive of this.
We can work with town council to get some language that would facilitate that in our town.
I'll do that and get you a council-vetted draft.
That is fantastic. That's a great solution, Patrick.
Yep. Diane's going to pull up some slides on the screen. The last item that was outstanding at last meeting was to try and come up with some other rate options that may err more on the side of affordability. We had three options that were presented last meeting, and each option presented here, the goal of each is to get us to a certain level of retained earnings at the end of FY26, which is the fiscal year that these rates pertain to. And so, I've, I won't go through maybe the rate options that were presented last time, but I'll show you the new ones, and we can discuss them and see if that, there's a direction we want to go in there. So, if you want to go to the next, skip the next slide. Yep. Sorry. Yep, go back one more. Okay. So, I have nice numbers at the top on my copy, but they're missing. Hopefully, they're on your printed copy.
They're on yours.
So, these are new rate options that would get us to fourteen percent budget in retained earnings for both the water and the sewer fund under option four, twelve percent under option five, and ten percent under option six. The relative fiscal impact is listed there for the average household. Obviously, it's less than the other three options that were presented on the eighth. And I'll just note that if we went in a direction such as option five or six, that would require us to dip into sewer retained earnings a little bit at town meeting to balance the rates. So, these are the new options. I also have other ones. If we need to see different percentages, I have those done out. But curious if there's any questions or reactions to those.
Did you say five and six? We have to dip into our current retained earnings?
Yes.
Sewer, sewer, you, you would have to, yes.
We have very little, right?
No, we're good. We're twenty percent, right?
So, the retained earnings will be recertified based on our FY25 year-end, projecting that we'll be at fourteen percent retained earnings in sewer. If we're going to target a lower percentage for both funds, the rate would reflect that, and you'd have savings. But for sewer to balance, you would have to appropriate some amount of retained earnings, because we're expected to close out at fourteen percent based on FY25.
I'm still not getting it. But, just me?
Yeah, no.
Ask the question.
Yeah.
Well, it's because, it's because he's got a forecast out, we've got a forecast out what
Right.
twenty-five is going to be.
We aren't going to make in twenty-six from twenty-five?
Right. So, FY25, and we discussed this a little bit last meeting, sewer retained earnings will be closing out at fourteen percent of budget. So, when we get our, our certification in September, that number is anticipated to be about fourteen percent of this year's budget. Okay.
So, if we stayed at fourteen percent?
Four is like
We stayed at fourteen percent, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to dip into it.
Correct. So, if you adopted option four or anything more on the aggressive side of option four, you wouldn't need an appropriation of retained earnings, correct.
And how does the, how does the liability play into it? The, the unearned, not unearned earnings, but the lack of payments?
Um, yep. So, we talked about that a little bit last meeting, where there's an uptick, modest uptick in tardiness. So, ratepayers are paying a little bit less. So, as of June 30th, we have slightly higher receivables. I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Yep. So, that could be about probably two hundred thousand in water, one hundred thousand in sewer. So, that's the delta. So, if behavior changed and we were able to collect sooner on those amounts, then we, our position might be more favorable at the end of FY26.
If we collect sooner on those, so the, the, one, I'm never worried about having to collect, only because unlike the private sector, it's, it's looked at differently. It's not a real risk liability, because, you know, you have a home secured, a home and land secured on it, and we're making at least fourteen percent interest on it. So, you know, we do, we do have protection in there.
Fourteen percent interest?
Yeah.
Bills that are not
When you're not paying
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. So, if, if, if we were in the, in the private sector, then there's, there's risk, you know, it might not have, you can't go back and get anything. Whereas here, we don't have the risk, plus we have an income coming in. But I don't really know how the one hundred thousand on one side of the bill and two hundred thousand on the other really play into the whole thing.
Right. And to that point, I guess we, I don't have a crystal ball, unfortunately, so I can't predict how that'll pan out out of FY26, if it's more favorable, less favorable. I can deal with the actuals from FY25 and where I know we stand, which is what these reflect. But to your point, if, you know, things are more favorable, we could end up beyond fourteen percent, which is great, or a little bit under fourteen percent, that'll just be what it will be, right? I can only forecast with a certain degree of certainty. But to your point, all these charges are secured by the underlying property. Yep.
David, go ahead.
David? What was the, what was the recommendation of the Water Sewer Infrastructure Advisory Committee for setting the rates for fiscal year twenty-six?
Yep. So, when I last met with them, the sentiment was to fully fund the retained earnings to twenty percent of budget by the end of FY26.
Got it. So, with all the, so with all the projects that we, you know, because this board sat here, and we made a commitment to the residents of the town, and we said, "We're going to, we're going to spend ten and a half million dollars, three and a half million dollars in, I believe, twenty-five, three and a half million in twenty-six, three and a half million And we said, we're going to, we're going to spend $10.5 million, $3.5 million in, I believe, '25, $3.5 million in '26, $3.5 million in '27. So, I mean, I think the fact that we sat here, we said that, we're doing the work now, we've done a lot of the work at Fisherman's. We've started the process with Phase Two at Kings, we have a lot of work to do, we're starting to see those, those benefits occurring. I think, my view is, we need to stay the course, and we need to make sure that, you know, at a time where we're investing more, we need to make sure that we're returning our, these retained earnings to where they, to where they should be, so we retain that flexibility for, you know, for, for future projects.
Yeah, but let me make sure that, I'm not sure that's a therefore in what you said. Because, we're still going to be able to go out and pursue the MWRA loans under any of these scenarios.
Yes, and I think to both of your points, if you look at the slide, the second to last line there, it's, or, I'm sorry, the second line, where it gives you a measure of how many years it would take us to get to our current policy, and that factors in all of the borrowing that we are currently anticipating.
We're not drawing down, David, in terms of what we're, the work we're going to do, or the investment, or that pathway at all, it's just, it's just how quick we kind of replenish the fund.
Refill the savings account.
And it seems to me, in this time, when our revenues are down and we're taxing up, this is a place where we can actually smush out the return to quote "normal" without sacrificing the work that we need to do, if I'm, if I'm understanding the picture correct.
It doesn't make any changes in the work that we're going to do, it's just in the retained earnings.
Yep, and, and, you know, getting even to 10%, I mean, that's certainly a low compared to some of the others, but it's not like, you know, these other, you know, cities and towns are going out of business when they have 8% or 10%, you know, half of them basically are at that level.
Understood, but our financial guideline is 20%.
It is.
And the recommendation from the one we set, because it's like, understood.
And number 10 on the agenda is the definition of what we talked about at the financial summit, and maybe this is one of the matters we bring up, whether or not this percentage is the correct percentage, given the economic climate and our situation where we've been investing in our availability of loans for these types of projects, and-
If we look at the comparative communities, I mean, 60% of the communities that you have researched are below that figure, right? There are 10%, or 15% are below, right? So, 60% of our peer groups, so to speak, are comfortable utilizing, you know, less than 20%. Is that, you know, does that mean everything? No, but obviously there are other towns of similar size to us that are able to do it with that, you know, with less of a percentage, so.
And, and, you know, there's always different factors, right? We don't know what projects they have going on and everything else, right?
How old their infrastructure is too.
Six out of 10 or below.
But I do want to, David, I want to get back to your, there's no point about the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. You know, with all due respect, you know, of course, they have, you know, a very particular focus, right?
Yeah.
And, I don't know if they were presented with all these options at that point either.
No.
Really, because they were presented with the same ones we had, you know, earlier around, right? So, I'm not really sure what they would say today, but, you know, of course, you know, if I was sitting on that committee, I probably would say, hey, I want to make sure we get that 20% too.
But I, but I also want to make sure that we, you know, we have, we have an obligation, we're under consent decree. We're at a time where we're, you know, where we've actually seen, you know, since the consent decree went into place in, I believe, 2015, we actually saw water and sewer rates fall a number of years. So, I just want to make sure that we're continuing to make the investments necessary and that everybody is, is paying in. And that we're, we know that we have these responsibilities, and we know we have these costs, and we know that we're, you know, going to have to continue to fix these, these problems. We know that at Fisherman's Beach, we know that that problem is, is, there's probably a greater scope. So, that's going to require more funds, so that's going to require more of, more of an investment. So, I just, I just want to make sure that we're, that we're going to address this, you know, a lot, you know, as we've done this previously, it's been out of sight, out of mind. And when something breaks, we fix it. So, I'm glad that we're trying to get ahead of that curve a little bit, or play catch-up considerably, because, you know, we, you know, when we started talking about this back in 2015, 2016 during the consent decree, I believe we still had wooden pipes.
I do have a question for Patrick, do you have an average of what other communities, what the average is of, of other communities of what they?
Their policy?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have an average, I just sampled what we have today, obviously, I can go deeper for a larger conversation about the policy itself.
I think we have to make a decision, I think we need to make a decision tonight.
As it relates to the rate, we have to make a decision, but as we talk about a more broader financial policy conversation, that maybe that is part of that deep dive, to understand if our policy today should be our policy tomorrow, so.
So, to move it along, I mean, frankly, if you were, I wasn't hearing the whole conversation, I was just looking at it, I would go for option six, I would keep it as low as possible.
I would second that.
Okay.
See, I'm, I'm thinking-
That's exactly what I was thinking.
I'm thinking the safest, the safest bet, I, I think the most responsible bet right now is option four.
I was going to-
Because by going to option four, we're not touching any of our retained earnings.
That was going to be-
By going to six, we're going into retained earnings, and I think we, we still have to, I think we're just safer sticking with not having to touch that.
And I think to be respectful of David's point, we are playing catch-up in order to get to a point where we can be proactive. We can't even be proactive yet because we're catching up. So, we are sliding the scale a little bit towards proactivity by pushing it to even the fourth scenario, because now to bolster into our retained earnings is going to take an additional three years instead of a year or two years. However, given the economic climate, giving, given our tax rates, given all these things that we are asking our community to pitch in for, I think it is responsible to consider it, and also, as we are in line to have a conversation about the financial policy, I think, in light of that, we should be maybe not considering full throttle until we decide that that's the next policy we're going to be facilitating for the next couple of years.
It's, it's just a conversation about how much retained earnings do we want. We're not discussing what, how much work we should be doing, we're already committed to the work.
Right.
It's just, do we really need to have this level of retained earnings?
Right.
I think we're very safe going with option number four.
All right.
So, do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion and go with option number four.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
I don't have anything to add at this point, if you're going to make a motion, I'm just going to ask Diane to move to the last slide, which has the actual rates. And, the motion can just say to incorporate these rates into the minutes.
Okay, and, and before you make your motion, because Liz specifically asked at public comment if we would take comment during this particular matter, Liz has her hand up, so go ahead, Ms. Smith.
So, two things, one is, as we know, policy doesn't all along, right? So, we have a policy of 20%, but we haven't hit 20% in a long time. For example, Marblehead may have a policy of less than 7%, but at the end of 20.4 in their sewer enterprise fund, they have retained earnings of barely $2 million, and they spent down about $1.2 million, and they ended, they came into 25 with $1.7 million in retained earnings in their sewer fund, and $1.3 million in their water fund. So, I don't know what their total budget is, but I think they're probably well above the 5% to 7% at, at that rate. So, it really is about what you want to spend and what your needs are. In the last year, yes, we have dedicated money through ARPA and SRF loans and capital for consent decree work, work that is required by the consent decree, but we haven't set anything aside for the things that come up that we haven't anticipated or that we should be anticipating but that we're not, because we're spending so much money on fixing the pipes. So, we had a water main valve break, it cost $100,000 to fix it, we did not have any money in the sewer retained earnings to cover that, right? And then there was some reconfiguring of ARPA money to cover it, because we didn't, we were, we were at negative then. On paper, you could say it's on paper, but we couldn't spend what we didn't have.
Right.
So, I just think it is important to consider what the plan is, as well as, you know, what the rates are going to be. And the third thing I want to say is, when we raised rates last year, they were to get us to, correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, retained earnings of 17% for '25 and building to 20% over three years. Now, that was the plan, 17%, we ended at 14% in sewer and 6% in water. So, just remember, the numbers don't always come to fruition, so the more you skinny it down, the more risk there is. So, I, I really would urge you to, to not make any changes in your thinking about what the policy should be with at the finance summit, and, and to not, to not go for broke right now.
So, do you have a recommendation of one of these?
Yeah, our recommendation was to, you know, try to build back to the 20%. I, I would, I think four is even too low, I would at least be choosing, what was it, one, two, I can't remember what the number was.
One, two, and three, so three is 16, a minimum retained target of 6%.
At least a minimum of three, in my opinion.
So, that, the minimum of three would, would be an increase in average, could you go back to that slide?
Diane, can you go back to two slides?
An increase of 300.
One more?
One, yep, keep going.
Please.
Please, one more.
Keep going.
Well, way more slides than we thought.
Oops.
One more, so these were the three that were presented.
Okay.
It's one, two, three, right?
And that's one, two, three across, yep.
So, and, so you're, you're proposing option three, which is a $300 annual increase, okay? And that's the Water Sewer Infrastructure Advisory Committee's recommendation?
No, that is Ms. Smith's.
No?
No, what was Water Sewer?
Water Sewer recommended one, but we didn't have-
Water and Sewer recommended one, but you were recommending three, okay? Thank you.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
So, I'm making a motion for level four.
Is there language, Patrick, we should be reading?
Patrick, where's the language you want me to read?
Diane, if you just skip back to that last slide.
The last slide.
Okay. You'll just want to adopt the rates as shown in the meeting under option four, that would be the motion.
Okay, that is all we have in our packet, Diane, so.
So, what is it, make a motion to adopt the rates as shown in option four?
In the packet.
In the packet on page 19? Is that what it is, Diane? I just want to make sure we're really clear on this motion.
Page 19, right there.
Okay.
Yep, and you can just add that the rates will be incorporated into the meeting minutes, I apologize and put the language in the packet, usually do that.
Could you add that the rates will be incorporated into the meeting?
That the rates will be incorporated into the meeting minutes.
Second that.
Yeah, the second, okay, all those in favor of option four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm a no.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just worried we're continuing the past mistakes, and we should be restoring these retained earnings and staying within our, staying closer to our financial guidelines, so.
So, the motion is passed, free to for option four. Thank you, Patrick.
Maybe we should have tried to compromise at like 15.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment?
Oh, can we just go to the next one?
It's getting late already and we have barely dug into this, so. Next is discussion and possible vote on the employee handbook and revised motor vehicle record standalone policy. We have Marion here to help us through this portion.
Thank you, Patrick.
Patrick, thank you, thank you, Patrick.
So, Marion McMaster, HR, I don't know if you want to start with the handbook or the standalone policy first?
Let's start with the standalone policy first.
So, last we spoke, you had approved a bunch of standalone policies, and within that packet was a motor vehicle policy. But it was sort of a recommended policy from our insurance company. And when I took a deeper look at it, as I was going through and updating the other policies that were approved, I just felt it wasn't specific enough. So, I wrote a new policy and then sent it to legal counsel for review, and this is their final draft back.
And this incorporates, at a minimum, what insurance required you elaborated to provide additional coverage for us?
Yes, so at our last insurance deep dive, Risk Management had advised that we have a better policy in place for this. The, the one thing that will change and I'll have to apply for is, we then would have to have us set up on the driver verification system, also known as DVS. And there's a bunch of paperwork that has to be done that Gino would have to sign off on for me to have access to it, so that if we have to check someone's driving record based on if they're going to be using town vehicles or not, it would have to be checked.
Is there a cost to that?
Minimal.
Is it just access is the cost, or it's not per use or anything like that?
I, I'll double check that question, but I think it's $8 per request, but I, I'm not quite sure how often we'd be doing it.
Okay.
Did I miss a social media policy in here? Or we're just talking, we're just going over there, okay, we're going over there, yeah, the motor vehicle one.
This is employee, not select board, so, there was a social media policy at one time that we reviewed related to the select board, but that's not on the agenda to me.
No, 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 I'm talking about-
Did you present a social media policy? No.
I didn't, there was a conversation a long time ago about the one that I think you all were working on, and then if, when you got yours done, we would probably adopt the, the same for the non-union employees.
Okay, so, do you want to consider these individually? There's a revised motor vehicle record standalone policy.
Yeah, let's do that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about that?
There's just the highlighted insert approving authority for you, if you want that to be town administrator, I don't assume so.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that that is a-
Sounds like a good idea.
Make a motion to approve the motor vehicle record policy?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Personnel policies.
Personnel policies, so on, I believe the first change was on page 31. Under vacation time. The last proposal was that the employees start out with three weeks vacation. And, the, what was, just to refresh your memory, it was two weeks, depending on your levels, so some levels got two, some levels got three. And then at the fifth year, a fourth, I'm sorry, a third week would be earned for those that didn't have the three weeks. And then at the ninth or 10th year, you got the four weeks. So, this is the revised version of that, which, again, if you want me to change anything, it now reads the first full calendar year through the ninth year is three weeks. The 10th year through the 14th year is four weeks, and then as of the 15th year, it goes to five weeks. We had a little discussion around whether or not you wanted to, this should bump to 20, but that never got answered, so I left it.
So, the bottom line is now, it's the same for everybody going forward, and actually giving a little bit more vacation to people at the lower grades.
Yes, and I confirmed with legal that all of these changes shouldn't start until January. So, we don't go back and retro anybody for this year, they probably wouldn't, it wouldn't work out that way anyways. And then, they said there is no grandfather clause, so I went and checked our current policies, and we don't have any language in there speaking to grandfathering, there is no grandfather clause.
So, we could add a grandfather clause, though?
We could.
Good, so I, I just want to say, I, I'm not in support of three weeks vacation for somebody who is in their early years, and in getting the same amount of vacation for somebody who's seven, eight, and nine years. And I would really rather see it one through five years, two weeks, six to 11 years, three weeks, 12 to 15 years, four weeks. And anybody over that?
That would coincide with the DPW contract.
Right.
Not mine, it's DPW guys, it's exactly their language.
That's their language?
Two for five, you get five to 10, three, four, and then after 15, five.
Is it just DPW or is that?
I don't know the other contracts, they might know better than me.
It sounds like fire.
So, you want to, you want to repeat that? So, that's one to five years, get-
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two, six to 10, get three, 11 to 15, get four, 16 plus, get five?
And that's it.
That's it, that's where you max out.
I think starting with two weeks is paltry, to be quite honest, for anybody of this, in this day and age. I don't think it puts us in an advantageous position when people are comparing us to neighboring towns. But I do agree, you know, the one to five, six to 10, 11 to 15, 16 plus, that's pretty standard, those, you know, set blocks.
But I do agree, you know, the one to five, six to ten, eleven to fifteen, sixteen plus, that's pretty standard, those, you know, set blocks. I do not want to see where we currently are with, you know, based on your level of position dictates how many weeks you get. I think that's completely unfair to those at the lower end of the totem pole. So, that's my general feeling.
Is it position or time?
It was, currently, it's both, right?
The existing policy that was updated in 2022.
Structure of position.
Had structure of position.
Right, I'm just looking at length of service. That's the only thing I'm looking at right here.
I agree with Danielle. I think, I think for those individuals starting their careers, one to five years, two weeks is very paltry. You know, we're, we're going to struggle to fill some of these, some of these roles because of, because of these.
Salaries.
Because of these salaries and because of these PTO policies.
Yep.
So, I just think we have to be, I feel we have to be much more competitive there. You know, if the salaries are going to be, you know, a little lower, there should be some benefit to the employee of the town. And I think three weeks would be, would be that minimum level, just in my.
There's just going to be very little that we can do to separate ourselves or put ourselves in a more advantageous position, and certainly not going to be through salary. So, any area that we can, you know, potentially augment, you know, what we're offering is going to be in the whole package, which is vacation, sick, all of that.
So, we have vacation, we have vacation, we have sick, we have the three, we also have the three personal days.
That's part of the new policy that would start in January, yes?
That would be the new one, right? So, it's.
That's all standard stuff. That's not anything above and beyond. That's your minimum of what you have to offer people these days.
We have flex time and comp time, too, which not everybody does, but it's.
We also don't have paid FM, paid maternity and things of that nature that are like, you know, prime things that people ask for nowadays, so.
So, one of the problems is, I know I don't have the grid in front of me of all what the super community, what all of our super pools look like. You have that?
Do you like it?
Yeah.
You've given us that how many times, actually, Mary Ann?
Since you only have one copy of it, Mary Ann, can you like?
Just tell us who has.
Yeah.
Can, or, I don't know, I was just going to ask her to summarize basically, you know, from your professional judgment, you know, what our total package here, you know, with, let's say, starting with what you have in front of us. Where does that put us in terms of levels of attractiveness, competitiveness, generosity, et cetera?
I think you alluded to some of it. We're not on the high end of salary, so our salaries that we've gone back and forth with, depending on the job, are not as attractive as other towns. Three weeks is definitely attractive to a candidate, but it could also be negotiated in the hiring process. If somebody was pretty adamant about it, it would be up to the town administrator to say yes or no if somebody's trying to negotiate an extra week's vacation. So, I mean, that could get negotiated in the process.
That's what I would recommend not doing personally.
Yeah, I agree.
I am one of those that tends to not want to have that option, because once you do that for someone, you kind of set a precedent and you start that ball rolling and you, before you know it, you have to negotiate for all. That's just me.
I don't know what it says on the sheet or whatever. Just across the board, other communities, are most people doing three weeks right from Yacko?
I did find a lot of communities, or at least our super peers are really even. There are no levels of like, oh, you're only this position, you get this. Everybody got the same right from the start.
It looks like most of them are two weeks.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. But if we are trying to put ourselves in an advantageous position and we know we can't do that under salary, then this might be a small give that might yield us a benefit, so.
Do we know if other people have the three personal days?
Yeah, that's why we went to three, because five was excessive. Nobody had five like we did.
So, most other people do have the three personal days as well as the two weeks, so we're not, okay.
Yep. It's kind of like half a dozen of one, and you know what I mean?
Right.
You're going to cut back personal days, too, by two days, so, you know, you might as well add it to the vacation. Do you know what I mean? That's my thought process.
So, would that be your recommendation to compromise?
That would be. However, you know, I still, I'm not a fan of doing partial weeks for vacation, so I do think that we should adopt the three personal days. And I think we should, I'm happy to structure, you know, three weeks, one to five, maybe four weeks, six to ten, you know, eleven to fifteen. Or at that point, you can just cut it off right there and say ten plus.
Right.
You know, max it out at five, or, you know, do something like that. Doesn't have to be structured this way.
Yeah, I think the only thing, I'm fine with starting with three weeks. I think the only thing is like ten years is a long time to wait to get a bump. So, I think, you know, if you wanted to do five years or.
One to five, three, six to ten, four.
And then.
Eleven.
At the fifteenth year, five, fifteen or whatever, like.
Right, fifteen plus.
Fifteen plus, you get the five-week bump, so as long as somebody writes this down for Mary Ann.
I've written it down a couple of times. I just want to double-check where we're at.
That, that's just my opinion, is like.
One to five, three, six to fifteen.
Four.
Four. Whoa, pen's exploding.
Sixteen plus five.
Sixteen plus five.
Yep.
So, one to five, three, six to fifteen, four, sixteen plus five.
Well, I would, yeah, I guess, I guess I would say six to fourteen, so that the fifteenth year.
Six to fourteen.
Yeah, six to fourteen, four, and then at the fifteenth year, five. I mean, I think that is pretty standard.
You think that's pretty standard?
I do. I mean, not in, maybe not in municipal life, but I mean, we don't have a lot of leverage for hiring these days. And so, I think we shouldn't cut our noses by our face. A week's vacation time, first of all, you're not even guaranteed they're going to take it. That's the first thing. It's just what you're offering them. And then, second of all, we're talking about, when people take vacation, they come back happier employees, they do better work, they're more efficient, they, you know, like, they replenish their time with their families or, like, I just feel like it's important that we.
Speaking from experience?
Yeah, I did just come back from vacation, so I can speak from experience. So, I think it's important that we value that, and we've been highly criticized for not putting enough value in employees recently. And if this is something we can do that has no cost to the taxpayer, we should consider doing it.
Well, there's a cost to taxpayer. I mean, when, when somebody's.
But let's be clear, turnover costs the taxpayer.
I don't think we've ever had an issue with somebody taking too much vacation and their job wasn't getting done.
Right.
But I don't think we've ever had that, that I'm aware of.
That's a good point.
Have we reached a relative consensus on that point?
So, I'll make that change.
Okay. On to thirty.
On to the other change was personally on page thirty-three.
I guess.
And I just changed the language to the three days.
Sorry, I have sick time highlighted. That was the conversation last week. It was, I mean, two weeks ago was one, and we brought it to one and a quarter, because that's what the policy is today, right?
Right, correct.
That's what they're accruing.
It was the accrual, right.
Okay. And then if.
I have just one question on that. Do we have to say who they have to provide a doctor's note to? Does that matter? Like, does it say who has to require it?
Yeah, HR.
They may require to provide.
To human. They have to return it to HR.
Yep. Upon their return to HR.
Okay, right.
And we should just have a best practice in HR for how, when we require it, how we ask.
Well, that's my question. They may be required. Like, who makes the requirement?
Who makes the determination of the requirement?
Right, it should say they are required.
Yeah, they are.
You should just say are and not may.
Not may, right.
Yeah.
They are required. It's not optional.
Yeah, because when we say may, then there's subjective.
There's too much subjective.
It just gives room for. Okay. Then we go to personal leave.
Page thirty-three.
On thirty, yeah, it's thirty-two on ours, but.
Right, thirty-two is.
That was where we just were.
No, sorry, we were in thirty-one, sick time, so now we're in thirty-two personal leave.
Okay, so mine isn't lining up with yours.
Yeah, mine is printed out. Ours is probably just.
Okay.
But we're on personal.
Okay.
So, as discussed, that goes from five to three, which seems to be on par with our super peers.
Everybody else?
That's it, right?
That's it.
I've got a couple more. Let me just see where. Yeah, no, that's it.
What about the grandfathering?
Yep.
Is your recommendation, you should do the.
I think you could.
It's going to be retroactive, basically. It's going to apply to everybody, because now you're going to have people side by side doing the same job. One's been there, they got hired last year, they got one set of benefits. Someone's hired this year, he's got a different one. What's that? It's only a week?
So, the recommendation from legal was to start the new personal days and the new vacation time, because we, right now, the way we've been doing these and people accrue it is calendar year, not fiscal year. So, when January one hits, that's when all this change takes place. There is no language in our current policy that grandfathers anybody into the way it was. And if we're changing vacation to three weeks, it's a benefit to the people that didn't have it. It's not.
Yeah, I guess.
So, change.
There's no net loss.
They don't lose.
You lose personal days, but you gain a vacation week, in theory.
Okay, so we'll apply. Everyone will be on the same, yes, right, okay, that's what I was trying to get.
Yes, everybody's been on the same as of January one.
Yes, got it. Okay.
You don't want grandfather language, right? You're not saying you want it.
You don't need it.
I don't think you need it.
I need it. There's a benefit here.
From higher date? It has, so Marzie's asking the question, does, how do you count years of service and does it carry over from other municipalities? And it does, depending on the jobs and the background. We've had people come from other municipalities and their years of service carried.
Years of service in the position, right, it should be clarified in the position here, right? That would be my recommendation. Like, if someone was, say, I don't know, Director of Finance in Saugus for five years, and then they come here and they're on year one.
On five, the step five, they started in year one.
We're not going to honor Saugus's five years.
No, but they might.
Calculating our vacation time.
Try to negotiate that in their job offer. That could be a topic of conversation.
We're going to say flat out, no, because we don't negotiate.
Well, to be more competitive, I think we should be negotiating. If somebody's coming in and we want to get them, get a higher level of employee.
Yeah, but maybe we're going to compensate with salary.
Yeah, so that's all in negotiation.
It's all in negotiation, yep.
But I'm saying we're not going to negotiate vacation policies.
No.
Right, that's the reason those boundaries exist.
Vacation policy.
People, everyone can negotiate salary, that's fair game, but this is a standard.
What you're talking about is you're negotiating the level in which you're coming in.
It's common for some people, when they come on board in any job, to try to negotiate an extra vacation week. It happens. I'm not saying it.
Sure, yeah.
It happens a lot in all sorts of different jobs. People might say, not only do I want this salary, but I want five weeks vacation, or whatever the case may be, because of where they're coming from.
Of course, they can ask for the moon, right? But the standard should be that, you know, salary and compensation is certainly negotiable, but this type of stuff, you want to be consistent.
I would think so, too, but.
That's my practice, but.
Okay, so we will, so then the request is that length of service in Swambscott.
Yes, in the position here.
In the position in Swambscott is what the handbook should state and not length of service anywhere.
For example, if you were to be the land use coordinator in Swambscott and you eventually rose up to senior planner, those years as land use would count.
Right.
Towards.
Right.
But, you know, coming from outside, no, you would not.
Where do you want that language?
I think just in the header, where it says length of service to town, to town of Swambscott, or.
Anywhere that we have a graph that shows length of service, you know, where we're giving X number of weeks based on length of service, it should denote.
Probably add it into longevity, then?
That as well.
Or you could just, not so legally, you could just make a note somewhere in the general provisions or in the beginning to say, any reference to length of service is defined as length of service in the town of Swambscott.
Exactly.
And then you wouldn't have to make the change in every single.
In every single spot.
I'd love to make a motion.
Let's do it, Doug.
All right.
Wait, on the handbook, I have one question on page forty-eight. If you look under bereavement leave, it says bereavement leave is generally not to be taken more than one week following the death or funeral of a family member. I just want to know, can we add something in there unless the town administrator authorizes? Because what you're finding, you're finding a little bit more, you find staff, there is a death in the family or passing, and then they're not actually having a memorial or a funeral until a month later when the family can come together. I just want to, can we, I just don't want it to be too tight.
What line are you on first before?
D. D.
To be fair, I think the language.
Says generally.
Generally.
Not to sound.
Like a lawyer?
Too critical. It doesn't mean anything, because it doesn't say is prohibited, it doesn't say shall, it doesn't say, it doesn't say a definitive thing. It just says in generality, this is a standard that we may uphold, so it's very fluid.
The flexibility is already in there. I'm good with, I'm good with that, then.
Yeah, and we have had, it's up to the town administrator, we've had incidences where somebody literally did say just that, it's not going to be happening for a couple of months, and by all means, you're going to take it when you have to take it.
Right.
Well, we actually had an employee that was challenged on it, so that's one of the reasons.
Oh, God, okay.
I brought that up.
Okay, move to accept the handbook as we have amended it in this conversation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Providing the handbook. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann, for all this work with all of these policies, bringing us.
Great job, Mary Ann.
All right.
Wait, can I just ask, have we, when was the last time we had a, is this our first employee handbook, or is this our first employee handbook?
We've had drafts.
Personnel policy.
Personnel policy pieces.
Okay.
It's like champagne town or something. We're in the twenty-first century.
For the twentieth.
Onward.
All right, on, in the same vein, similar but not the same, on to the select board handbook. And we have had multiple conversations about this handbook. We made a couple of revisions. We vetted it through council. And Danielle sent around the last version while I was away, and we just should go through. A lot of the notes on here by council were related to why certain things had to occur and to keep us in.
Compliance.
Compliance with, yeah, free speech cases and constitutional considerations. And, you know, softened some of our, at least for the first couple of pages, softened some of our language as it involves public comment. Let's see, going on to. Yep, so, does anyone have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Why are we looking, what are we doing as far as the code of conduct, too? In the past, actually, not last year, but the year before, because we didn't get to it, was, we did go over the code of conduct. It seems like leaving them separate isn't.
Well, we have a code of conduct. We pass, prior select boards have passed a code of conduct.
Right, but we haven't updated or looked at it. I mean, we had, we've had, we've also had this, and prior select boards have looked at it, too, so I just think we should, not tonight, but I think we should also look at the code of conduct, I mean.
Yeah, I agree. We should look at it, but I think this one's first, and this is the one we've been working on.
Yep.
For months. So, personally, because I have, so, but yeah, I think that definitely we should address the code of conduct also.
So, there were questions about, that I, the questions that I had, I'd raised several months back, chapter nine, town administrator, under D evaluations.
Yep.
Individual evaluations shall become part of the town administrator's personnel file and shall not be available for public viewing.
Yep.
I understand there's a comment in the, in the margin, however, we are basically saying that individual evaluations shall become part of the personnel file and are not for public records.
Well, we should discuss that, because if that violates open meeting, I mean, if that violates what the Division of Open Government's policy is, then we can say that, but we're in conflict of the state policy. So we can say the sky's purple, but, I mean, it doesn't make it true. So, to me, council is saying here that we should remove that language, because that, we can't necessarily say those things. Also, it was sort of, if I recall, policy under certain chairs, that the individual select board reviews were kept in the personnel file, but then the collaborative, like, one sheet or whatever, became public, and that was because, I don't know exactly, but you probably know better than I do, but I thought the feedback from council was, we could not not share a version of the town administrator's review.
You can share...
That is...
They, KP Law talked out of both sides of their mouth on this particular issue. So I did take it upon myself to FOIA request about a half dozen town administrator individual reviews from communities on the South Shore. I didn't get any. Some folks told me the records didn't exist. So I'm just saying, like, when it, when it comes to, when it comes to the, when it comes to the, this, when it comes to protecting confidential personnel information, we should do everything that we can do to protect that information and protect those employees. So KP Law may have an opinion, I personally would like to, would like to challenge that, because, again, there were communities that are represented by KP, there are communities that were represented by other law firms, municipal law firms, that are well-regarded within the Commonwealth, and that information was not shared.
So you're saying you want a second opinion?
I'm saying, yeah.
Was it not shared?
I would.
Or is there a way to reword the language so that it is more protective?
I wanna, I wanna make sure that we're doing everything that we can do to protect employees.
I don't disagree with you, David, but I guess, what I wonder is, like, with, with regards to the South Shore Research Project, if it was not shared, if people are saying there are no records to be shared, is it because they don't have to share it, or is it because they haven't evaluated their TAs? They didn't say. So I guess it's not definitive to me to mean that they're...
They're not sharing it.
Enacting a policy that we want to mirror. So I don't disagree with what you're saying, and if you wanted, we wanna get a second opinion, we can take a vote tonight to obtain a second opinion on the matter outside of KP Law. I don't think that there's anybody here who has an issue with that. But advice of our council is that we can't do that. So to me, if we're going to enact a policy tonight, we should reflect the advice of our council, and we could always amend it if we come up with a second, secondary opinion that we, that favors our position.
But it also took us months and months and months to, I'd rather have a policy that was, that was overly protective of these individuals' rights than not protective.
So you wanna, you wanna basically end that sentence at personnel file, period?
No, no, no.
You wanna keep the whole thing?
Leave it as is.
Okay. But we have legal counsel saying that we're in violation, we're in violation of Mass General law. I mean, I had to go through this, I had to go through this with KP Law, because I thought we could not release any evaluations, and KP Law, three attorneys from KP Law told me that we are obligated to release the information. Not only we obligated, but they also told me that, they had also advised the past two chairs that we were obligated to release the information.
I don't believe there was an obligation, I believe they said you may. You, you may with a vote of the, with a vote of the select board.
So as a select board member, I was always told that, no, there was no option, and I, I mean, I, I took that hook, line, and sinker until, until KP Law said, oh, no, you're in, you're in violation. So I do think we should reach for a second opinion, so that we could double-check and to make sure that we're just doing the right thing.
I would be okay with that.
Great. So it's not on the agenda, so we can't take a vote? But we can put it on the...
But it is, it is part of the...
I guess it's part of the pack, it's fine.
It is part of the select board.
All right, so then, would somebody like to make a motion?
I just wanna make a motion in, in, in favor of just regarding chapter, regarding chapter nine, section D evaluations, to seek out a second opinion, to, to evaluate the individual evaluations becoming part of the personnel file and not available for public viewing.
And there's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Mary Ellen?
What?
Did, I didn't hear you, sorry. Was there an aye? Okay, great.
The question then becomes, though...
What do we do tonight?
Exactly, during finalizing this tonight.
I think we still finalize it tonight, and then if the second opinion yields a different result, then we change it.
Then we change it, immediately.
Right?
So you think, leave it as is?
Yep.
Leave it with the language?
With their recommendation.
I think that's our desired state.
I think it's most the desired state. I mean, I, I'd...
We're, we're saying leave the language because we don't believe our, we don't believe legal counsel. I, I mean, we've got legal counsel telling us, this, this is, this is the law.
Well, we are saying we don't quite believe, and that's why we're getting a second opinion.
Right. But I would rather not finalize it, I, I don't see any, any reason to finalize it.
To be fair, this provision will not even be enacted for at least a year, because...
Right, we don't even have a town administrator.
We don't have a town administrator to evaluate, so there, I will forego the...
So why don't we just leave out evaluation?
Heart palpitations I have going against legal counsel without a second opinion, which says otherwise, because we are at least a year out from this being a problem. But we need to be able to figure out an answer to it before it does. Because we will have a new town administrator, and we will need to do evaluations.
So just, so I just have a question. So do we have, have, has, has the, has this version of the board signed off on the previous iteration of this procedures, policies, and regulation manual? Like, I, I've signed it.
You signed what?
I've signed this.
I've signed it in years past, I have not been, never been asked in years...
This one?
No, prior versions.
Yeah, when I first, yeah, last year. No, I have not.
You have not.
But I, I have followed the code of conduct and these, these policies.
Okay, 'cause I, I just, just one of the, one of the things was in chapter...
Chapter what?
Procedures. Where we talk about election and qualification.
Where are you, David?
We're at chapter two.
I'm on chapter two.
Yeah.
Candidates for, so the second paragraph, "Once elected, select board members must make arrangements to receive essential documents from the town clerk and will be required to affirm a written oath of office unless otherwise instructed. Formal voting by a select board member may be conducted only after the member has duly affirmed the oath of office. Affirming the oath of office shall include review and acceptance of the town's select board handbook, boarding committee handbook, and code of conduct." And we've added social media policy. Failure to abide by any of the items in the select board handbook or code of conduct will be punishable up to and including censured by the board." So my question is, if...
Well, that language is added.
No, 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 understood, understood. But the, the second sentence, "Formal voting by a select board member may be conducted only after the member has duly affirmed the oath of office." I'm just curious, if four of our members have done this, what this means to the validity of previous votes?
Well, there's no repercussion listed in the handbook as to what happens. Like, is there a censure, is there, what is the, what's the outcome if they don't sign it? You're saying because...
Because you didn't actually sign it, you're not qualified? Because once a vote is taken, you are obligated to follow, you're obligated to follow the bylaws and the handbook and the code of conduct.
This wording says, "Affirming the oath of office shall include numerous things other than just the oath of office," is your point, correct?
Correct, yeah.
I don't know of that answer, but...
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not creating, we haven't, we haven't created a constitutional crisis for ourselves by having, by having someone who has not signed and has not affirmed, duly affirmed, the oath of office, has taken, has taken votes for the last several years.
Well, also, it says may be and not shall be, so, again, not to legalese it, but I would, we could ask KP Law for an opinion on it, or a second opinion if you don't believe KP Law. Because the word "may" is different than the word "shall," and "shall" means it's required, and "may" means it may or may not be required.
In this context, I'm not so sure that's true.
Maybe conducted...
I'm not, I'm not trying to say that I am coming to that conclusion, I'm just saying we should ask council.
I, I think it's pretty clear, if you really wanna be technical about it, that it's not super kosher, the fact that Mary Ellen hasn't signed the handbook all this time. Okay, let's just, I'm not gonna, am I here to make a big to-do?
Let's just, hopefully, we'll have...
But let's, let's get this signed tonight.
Yeah, we'll just...
Let's, let's literally sign it, so we're all onboard, and we can make sure that we're all duly sworn in and voting members of the select board.
Also, I would be concerned about what the standing is of that, if you have a publicly-held election and a person is elected to a position, yes, they have to take an oath of office to put them into that position, but I don't know, from a, from a legal perspective, if we can require other things outside of that before they can validly take votes.
You can't, this is a policy.
Has the handbook not gone before, legal counsel before?
No, the handbook has gone before, and we sign off on it, but...
But this, with this wording?
With regards to this particular matter, to say that you can't be a select board member if you don't sign the handbook, I don't think that answer has ever been asked.
I just find it strange that it would be in there if legal counsel has looked at this before. I just think it's odd, because they point out other things, right, that shouldn't, or should be in there.
Well, that's why I said it says "may" and not "shall," because maybe they're reading it to mean...
Right. As one against the other, I have no idea.
I think we should just stick to the contents of today's handbook, and hopefully get it all straightened out so that we can all sign it tonight. How about that?
Yeah, great.
Does anybody have any more commentary as to suggested changes?
I just wanna, well, yeah, I think on the suggestion, "Failure to abide by any of the items in the select board handbook or code of conduct will be punishable up to and including censure by the board." What, what does that actually mean? Like, be punishable, like, is there a list of punishments?
Any possible punishment up to and including censure by the board. So, I mean, I think it is exactly how it's written.
I would say that stockade's not allowed, because censure is like one step...
Tarantula is not allowed.
Tarantula might even have. Yeah, I don't know, again, we didn't ask, legal counsel didn't weigh in on this sentence. I don't, I don't know what that means, except to say, if we did wanna censure somebody based on a...
Violation.
Violation of the code of conduct, we clearly state that in the code, I'm sorry, in the policy and regulations manual, we clearly state that in the manual, so that people know in advance that that could be a consequence.
Yeah.
It could be an end, it's similar to when you put "up to and including possible termination."
Right.
Right, you're not saying you're gonna, but you could.
You can pretty much do anything up to that.
Okay, and then, and then chapter ten, B, relations with town staff. We talk about, "However, town staff report only to the town administrator, whether directly or indirectly, not to the select board. Maintaining this proper chain of command between select board, town administrator, and town staff is critical to the proper functioning of the town government. Select board and its individual members should communicate with town staff as appropriate and include the town administrator, if appropriate, at the time the town administrator designees. No member shall request any town staff to undertake or complete any task or attend any meeting unless such request is explicitly approved in advance by the town administrator." I think this is an incredibly important provision.
Yeah.
I know there's been, there have been a number of recent directives issued by select board members to town staff.
Do you know this for sure, or are you just making something up again?
I know this with certainty, Mary Ellen.
Mm-hmm, I don't think so.
So, no, I, I actually, I actually do know this with certainty. So I was speaking in generalities, but since, since you've, since you've done this and opened this door, I will tell you, you know, Mr. Cresta, I believe we had a, I believe you, you had someone from your finance staff resign today?
Yep.
Yep, you did. So you had, you had Trang Vu resigned today. She was the finance person that was, that was, that was addressed by Mary Ellen to pay an unauthorized legal...
This is absolutely false, you have got to stop, you have got to stop making up these lies. You have to stop. I have to insist that you stop lying in public, or even in private, but this is not factual information.
So you didn't, you didn't have any communications with her?
I have...
Ask her, and ask, and ask her to do...
Ask her to pay an invoice? Absolutely not, absolutely not.
You haven't, you haven't sent, you haven't, you haven't sent.
I'm happy to have a meeting tomorrow, have a meeting tomorrow with her, whatever you would like. Absolutely, positively not.
Okay.
Not. And I don't know why you have to insist on constantly trying to go after my integrity. Absolutely not. You brought this up two weeks ago at a select board meeting, these are complete false accusations that you constantly are making, Mr. Greshman.
Because you did it, Mary Ellen.
Okay, because you were there.
These town staff reports to the town administrator, not to you, not to the select board.
Right.
No member shall request...
I did not, I'm in complete agreement.
No member shall request any town staff to undertake or complete any task...
Right.
Unless explicitly approved in advance by the town administrator.
I agree with that.
This did happen.
No, it did not happen.
This individual lefty...
No, it did not happen.
Excuse me, wait one second. What is on the agenda is reflection on the policy, and if you're not suggesting an edit to the policy, and nobody takes issue with the paragraph, let's move on, sign the policy, and hold each other accountable to the policy. As you've stated in the beginning of the conversation, Mary Ellen hasn't signed the policy in the past, let's get her to sign the policy tonight, and if you...
But, hold on a second, Mary Ellen voted for the policy in the past. Mary Ellen has followed the policy in the past. Mary Ellen follows the code of conduct, so let's get focused on who's actually following the policy.
But can I ask you, why you haven't signed it, then? Why haven't you signed it, then? Can I just ask that question, because what, what is the basis?
I just forgot about it.
Now, that's, now, that's a lie.
You don't disagree with it, you just forgot about it.
Well, in the very, in the very, in the very beginning, in the very beginning, I didn't think, I, I thought it was just a waste of time, asking people to sign it and then double-checking, and I just felt like it was one or two select board members just trying to give me a hard time. So that's, that's, that's really all it was. And then we were going over it and redoing it, and, and that's it. I voted to support a policy, so when you vote to support something, you are obligated, of course, to follow the policies. And the other thing is, you don't see me attacking someone's integrity, you don't see me acting inappropriately, I mean, you don't, you don't see me breaking the rules in these, in these, in these policies. That's, that's the issue, is following the policy. If you're so stuck on me signing it, I mean, I, I voted for it, I think, I just think it's just one more distraction.
So, so Mary Ellen, so...
Yes, David.
In town hall, so yelling at a, yelling at a town employee, such as Ms. Camerlingo, so that's, that's, that's appropriate?
Yelling at Ms. Camerlingo?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But I am, I don't think, really?
Yeah, you did, and there's a, and there's a power dynamic that's at play.
Oh, hold on, hold on a second, hold on. Now, so I am in town hall, let's just, if you wanna bring this, I'm in town hall, taking care of personal business, and Ms. Camerlingo decides to come in and get in my face, and I raise my voice and ask her to please leave me alone, please leave me alone. Is this how you wanna have this meeting here? You wanna start talking about these things?
I wanna, I'm gonna jump in here, because...
Thank you.
I am listening to the words of Debbie Friedlander hours ago, ask us to be better about this type of thing. At the same time, I wanna have an honest conversation, right? And I think it's about time that we did that. So as, as opposed to just lodging insults at one another or, or questioning things, let's just be honest and put it out there. You haven't signed it in the past, right? That is obviously a bone of contention for the other four people sitting here. I think that's safe to say, right? Because it feels like you didn't do it intentionally for a reason, so that you could, you could perhaps...
Break rules?
Well, if you didn't sign them, you don't really abide by the...
No, that's, that's totally inaccurate. No, that's, that's totally inaccurate, just because I didn't put my signature on here, doesn't mean I'm obli- I'm not obligated to follow rules that have been voted on.
But it kind of does, because that's the whole point of having a policy to sign off on, right?
That's your opinion.
If you're going to walk the walk, you have to talk the talk, right?
I, I do walk the walk, I do walk the walk, I do walk the walk.
Mary Ellen, I think that it would behoove you, at this point, to have an honest conversation.
I have honest.
Right, and sometimes you do things incorrectly, just own it, and let's move on.
Right, so if you want to point something out.
No, I don't, I don't, I could, but I don't want to, that's not my interest, right? I am honest, I just want to, I want us all to be on the same team, right? And, and, nobody's, I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, right? I think we should all stop doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because I think most people are guilty of the same thing here, right? But the, the opportunity exists for us to be better at this, as a group, as a unit, a team, right? Like, that's, that's how this is supposed to work.
Right, so you're sitting here, and you're watching, you're watching dysfunction at its finest, that's what you're watching here, you're watching Mr. Grishman.
No, no.
Trying to take shots at me nonstop, bringing up issues about an employee who was on her downtime, coming at me while I'm on my downtime, like, why, why are we even bringing this up?
We shouldn't even be talking about it, this is exactly what I don't want to do, is lodge insults back and forth.
Exactly.
I think if we all can be honest with ourselves, though, and admit that we probably have all violated some form of this, when, at, at one point or another.
Oh, I would be in total agreement with you, Danielle.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and I think that.
I would be in total agreement with you.
That's, that's fair to say, right?
Right.
But at least we own it, right?
Right.
That's all I'm asking, you know, not to just deny its existence, right? And, and no, that can't possibly be.
You're saying, in, in one form or another, at some point, have we all violated something in the, in these books? Of course, absolutely, of course. But when Mr. Grishman is pointing out specific things that are not true, I am not going to sit here and agree to something that is not only not true, but it turns around and attacks my character.
I think that Mr. Grishman, and I'm not, I don't know this for sure, but maybe if once in a while, like, we were just honest and said, you know what, David, maybe you have a point, maybe I crossed the line this time.
I'd be happy to do that, I am not going to agree to something, Danielle, that did not happen, I am not going to agree to something that did not happen, I did not ask any employee to pay an invoice, none, zero.
So, you didn't, you, so.
I never had a conversation with any employee to pay an invoice.
So, let's talk about the specific legal invoice we're talking about, let's, let's stop being coy and playing games.
Well, we have that on the agenda later on, would you like to do that?
Table this item and move to that, is that what you want to do?
Whatever you want to do, but I want, I, to Bill Demento's point, let's be honest and get this stuff out of here, let, let's stop, like, you know, being secretive and disingenuous, let's just get it all out. So, however, whatever shape that takes, let's do that, publicly, we owe that to people, at this point.
Do we want to just vote on this policy, and then move on to that as the next?
I make a motion that we adopt this policy as written.
Second.
And vote it now.
All those in favor of adopting the policy?
Aye.
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 Okay, great, so that's a five oh, reflect, vote, and I believe Diane.
And can I, yeah, yeah, while we're, while we're, yeah, while we're signing. Get these.
Let's, can we?
We have, we all have, Diane printed us all out acknowledgements.
Wait, can we move this item eight up on the agenda, so we can discuss this right now?
Yeah.
Legal bill?
Signing the handbook.
Are we signing the handbook first?
Yeah, where is, where is that acknowledgement, right here, so we all have a single page, which is an acknowledgement to the handbook.
Where is it?
It's right here.
Here.
Want mine? Okay.
Seven twenty-two.
Seven twenty-two, twenty-five.
When did our time start? Twenty.
One, just chair it up here.
Five, twenty.
And Gino, we, we don't have here a town administrator's handbook, per se.
Is that right?
But if, with the indulgence of the rest of the board, I would request that you have an obligation now, when you have reports of anyone abridging this, particularly in this section about, you know, people interaction, because, and I'm not just, I'm not just talking about Mary Ellen here, because, I think, at one point or another on this score, I wouldn't be surprised if every single one of us have abridged this over the last couple of years, okay? So, maybe not Katie, but everyone else.
This is the second meeting in a row that everybody has said that everybody has violated that paragraph, there may be others, I am very glad to be hu- to have humility and to say I violated certain things, I have not violated that paragraph.
Okay, you've, all right, you've never asked anybody in town hall to do anything without asking the town administrator?
I CC'd, I have CC'd the chair, or Gino, and Gino on every request.
One step closer to heaven than the rest of us, okay, that's great.
I'm just, I'm not saying I'm infallible, I'm just saying, on that particular one, I have not done that.
Okay, all right, so, but we do need to rely on you to, in some ways, be the reporter of this, okay? Because if we don't have that, and you get reports that this is happening, there's not the feedback mechanism that we need in order to hold all of us accountable, okay?
And I think too, as respect to the chair, whoever is chair at the time, the chair should be CC'd on request of the town administrator, that way the chair also knows therefore, you know, doesn't have to report.
Checks and balances.
Basically, five of us all the time, it's happening, the chair can also be a sounding board to be like, okay, this is happening, and I see it happening, and bring it to the board.
That's a little bit different, okay, that's fine.
But in years past, that has been, that has been the respect of the chair.
I agree, it's, it's, it's checks and balances, right?
Yeah.
So, not one person is responsible, there is more than one person responsible for checking.
That's, that's the different scenario, Katie, just to be clear, right? I mean, if, if someone's running around the town administrator to talk to someone else, they're not going to CC you when they're going to.
Understood, but I was saying, like, yes, I understand what you're getting at, but in addition to that, I'm saying.
Right.
If people could CC the chair to understand when things are being asked.
Sure.
And then.
It's a different topic.
Sometimes I feel like things get asked, and then they don't get done, so then people go directly to other people.
Yeah, I think that's.
And so, that is what I'm trying to figure out, if that's the scenario.
That happens.
So, the one question I would have is, what is the reporting mechanism?
All right, that's a great question. I think that you have to report to the chair when this happens.
Okay, yeah, so, I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, now that we've put that together.
Cleaning out the cupboards, all right.
And we have all signed the handbook, thank you, everyone, we are going to move, uh.
Item eight.
Item.
Whoa, Mazzy.
I'm sorry, our imp, Benay is on, or will be on. Okay, thank you, we are going to move item eight, at the request of the board, up to discuss now.
Okay.
So, let's discuss, you want to move it, let's do it.
Yep, okay, so let's.
Go ahead, guys.
You teed up, Danielle?
I am, let, let, let's go with this, this invoice, okay? This invoice for eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, how did we find out about this invoice? What is the chain of events, what exactly were we notified of by the former town accountant? How did this work? Let's start from the beginning.
You mean, like, procuring the services beginning?
No, how did this hall, this whole big controversy begin? Right, this began when Amy Sorrow, former town accountant, right?
Director of finance.
Thank you, director of finance, made who aware, who did she let know about this invoice?
Well, I would say the story begins earlier than that, right? The story begins when, the real part of the story is when.
Oh, of course, when we went to special town meeting, well, that's, that's.
Right.
The crux of how this came to be now, a thing, is what I, is what I want to start with.
Well, but to me, we wouldn't be here if we get to the, the root of a process of how we normally conduct our affairs.
And, and we'll get to that, to that part, right? We'll, we'll come back to that, but I want to understand how this became an issue right now, in the middle of July, from something that happened, I don't know, five, four, five months ago, I just want to know how it surfaced now.
But that's my point.
So, how did the, how did the bill come out, like?
How did this controversy about this bill come out?
No, Amy, so, there's a, there's a bill, and apparently, a, a copy of the bill, or there was an issue with the bill, and.
At month end, we were closing out the books, right, for fiscal year twenty-five, right?
Yep.
One of Amy's last acts when doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Was the shuffle, as it's called, right? Paying for invoices accrued, that, that have occurred, right?
Yep.
So, that's how this, this whole thing started.
Well, but no, I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't really know if that is how.
That's not how it started, that's just the.
I don't know if that's.
I'm just talking about the controversy that we're, we're dealing with right now, I'm not talking about the whole issue, it originated, obviously, way back at special town meeting, but I'm talking about.
Yeah, before that.
I'm talking about how it's come to light right now.
I think, I think a bill came in, and Amy said, hey, what is this bill?
Right.
And didn't, didn't, I don't know who, I mean, I was the chair at the time, she could have called me and said, what is this bill? Or maybe she could have gone to community development, or the chair, I think she did go to the chair, I mean, I did see a copy of emails that went from Amy to Katie, and then Katie copied it to Doug, and then Doug turned around and copied it over to David, so, there was one, two, three.
So, I'm the only one that didn't get a copy of this?
No, I didn't get a copy, I didn't get a copy of those emails either, until.
Okay, so let's, so there was.
Let's go with Doug's route, let's start back at special town meeting, or, is that, or prior to that?
Because I'm not doing that to go backwards, I'm going.
Yes.
There to get to the root of how we can solve this going forward.
Yes, so let's start there, go ahead.
Because I think, and I can't say definitively over all of time, but generally speaking, I think when we engage counsel, we, either an exec session or public session, there's either a consensus, or we take a vote to do that, that's my understanding, I cannot say definitively every single time, I'm not going to pretend that, okay? But I think the issue was that we had strife about the post, and what we were going to do, and so therefore, you know, people went in different directions, and tried to solve the problem in different ways, on their own, without processing it through this team.
Collective body.
Right?
Yeah.
So, that, that's the fundamental issue that got us here today.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I'm not going to go back, you know, I think the, the concern I have, fast forwarding to here and now, isn't fundamentally about this invoice, it's about if I understand the result of all this, and what town council is saying, our beloved town council again, is that it was all fine, you know, a couple people from the select board, as long as you kind of get the nod from the town administrator, as long as it's under ten thousand dollars, have at it. And to me, the result of that, is like, anybody that's sitting in any two chairs can go in and have a, hey, how you doing, town administrator, I actually want to, like, do eight thousand dollars for X, Y, and Z, no one's aware.
Yeah, but that's not, okay, I take offense to that, because it makes, it feel like we were plotting to somehow make this, I mean, you're looking at me like you could care less what comes out of my mouth right now.
I, I am, I am very, very skeptical of the fact that you, you know, I don't know what your definition of plotting is, but when you easily had three votes, and you could have brought it to a select board exec session, or whatever, and just gone through with it, and the fact that it didn't happen that way, that's pretty close to my definition of plotting. So, how were you not plotting when it was two people going off and doing something?
It never came up in a conversation, I never asked the question, I never, and I'm being fully transparent here, Naomi Draven, in a finance committee meeting, said, in years past, when we've had issues like this, we just get a second opinion, and I was like, we should get a second opinion, and so, it, I did not stop to think, Doug, to your point, how exactly do you go about doing that in order to not have issues like this? I did not do that, I should have asked, Mary Ellen, I should have asked the town administrator, acting town administrator, I should have asked more questions, fine, I, I take that in stride, I will never make that mistake again, I will come to the board and ask, but we received services, and I feel like we need to pay those services, whether you don't want to do that tonight, we can figure that part out, council has said we can approve this, Amy allocated funds in the legal line item to pay this.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
Before she left, she allocated the money to pay it, so if you want to talk about plotting.
I think it's ser-.
To bring it up as a controversy, but then to put money aside to pay it, knowing that it might all smooth itself out, feels a little like, like, do you want to come to conclusions about why she did what she did?
Mm-hmm.
When we don't know exactly why she did.
She's not here, I, that's.
Okay, but, but you want to come to conclusions about what I did what I did, and you're okay saying that to, to me here now, so like, I don't have the benefit of saying, like, oh, well, because she's not here, were you plotting when you did this? I don't have that benefit, so what I can say is, I, a mistake was made, I'm happy to take ownership in it, if you want to go to town meeting, I'll say it in front of three hundred and fifty-six other people, but I, I don't think, town council's not requiring it, Amy put money aside for it, we, the services were rendered.
It is normal behavior to turn around and get second opinions, get consultants out there, and to, to take on services that need to be taken on for the town, and not coming to the select board and having a big vote, for example, we spent ninety-four thousand dollars on that consulting group over the library and the Hawthorne, did that ever come in front of the select board, even capital? I mean, David, you knew all about that stuff, but that's, that was town business that you're doing, but that never came in front, did we ever come in front and say, we need to have Kurt James, excuse me, do we need to, we also need to pay Kurt James, another attorney, these are things that, that we don't do, so it's not like it was beha- it was behavior that was no different than past behavior.
I, I disagree, and here.
I, I hear you.
And, and, and this is why, and I think this is important, because whether or not I knew the amount, exactly what the ticker was going through the legal fee, no, of course I didn't know.
Mm-hmm.
But we were all aware that we had engaged a consultant to be doing that, we all nodded in exec session, if we didn't take a vote, we all are aware, we're all aware that Kurt James has been engaged to be our legal counsel for these things, that's not the point, not the point about, like, exactly the dollars, and whether or not there's an engagement letter, or, you know, these, it's, it's basically the fact that a couple people can go off, and again, and, you know, just think about it, like, you know, two years from now, someone else is the chair, right, and they go off and do something like this, and it's something that you really disagree with.
Mm-hmm.
Right? It doesn't feel great, so all I'm just trying to get to is, like, I'm not, I'm not, I care less about the eight thousand dollars in general, I mean, it's a big bill, it's a lot of money, so I do care about it, but the more important point is, like, how do we make sure this doesn't happen again?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Is that something that we need to think about, as like, an amendment to our select board handbook two weeks from now, or whatever, so that we actually have a process to ensure this doesn't happen? That's what I most support.
I don't disagree with you.
I don't either.
And I think it was a perfect storm of acting town administrator, new chair, a contentious situation that we were all trying to problem solve for, as you stated before, I think I think we were looking for solutions, and I was like, oh, this is what was done in the past. I don't see an issue. I never even... I never asked, is there something we have to do before we spend this money?
I think that it was a very contentious issue, right? That we were very split about, right? To be fair. And I think that I could have sworn I've said publicly in meetings leading up to that, can anyone tell me conclusively what this means? And nobody could. And it was very much something that I, you know, it makes perfect sense to me that we would need to get a second opinion. None of us knew the answer to any of the legality. We asked KP Law. We asked people to weigh in. People were interpreting language on their own. It was kind of like a free-for-all. And I think that the process was not correct and one that should be avoided. You know, and it could have been by a simple vote ahead of time, you know, to engage, right? So that's fair, and that's on us. That's partly on you because you were the chair. And, but, you know, are you expected to know every single nuance and thing? No. I mean, you're not perfect. None of us are. Right? Like, I have to think, at some point in the history of Swampscot, past chairs have done things incorrectly. How could you not? How does everybody know every single thing they're supposed to do, right? So, you know, yeah, we didn't do things the right way. Yes, we need to solidify a process so we don't duplicate those going forward. You know, but here we are, right? So what do we do with this bill? Like, this law firm deserves to be paid? Like, there's no two ways about it, you know?
The law firm deserves to be paid. The work was done. Excellent work was done. The money is there. I just think the drama needs to end. Town administrator knew about it. There was nothing behind...
That's the one thing I take exception with. Because I do feel like, and I think this is a fair statement, that we've taken advantage of this interim town administrator and his pleasant demeanor and his easygoing nature and his desire to want to do the right thing by every one of us, right? And I think that, you know, to put it on him is not a fair assessment. And I don't think that he was in a position, at that point, to say no to any one of us. And should any one of us have asked him, asked the things of him that were asked of him, probably not. Because I don't feel like he was in a position where he could be okay saying no to the chair.
For the record, I think he said no quite a bit to the chair.
Well, and I think for the record, you've probably been put in some really uncomfortable scenarios, Gino, right? I'm going to throw that out there. Not by anyone in particular, but just in general. And I don't think that's fair. All right, and I don't think he's the fall guy here.
The question is, was I aware of the situation? Yes. Did I authorize it? No, I wasn't ever authorized it, but I was aware of the situation.
There you go. So that's his honest feedback. And we have to take that feedback and action it and change the way we do things, right? Because it's not fair. All right, so I think that's to your point, Doug, that maybe answers questions for you guys. Like, did he know about it? He just told you. Did he authorize it? He just told you.
Right. And, you know, if you want to go down that path, that makes it more complicated.
Sure.
Because he didn't authorize it.
No.
So, and it's actually up to him to authorize it.
Right.
And if he had authorized it, we wouldn't be here talking about it.
Exactly.
We didn't know...
So your claims that you've made are well-understood, like, well-taken. Do I still think, you know, it was done the wrong way? Yeah. Was it done unilaterally, not part of a collaborative effort? Yeah. Do we have to fix that? Yes, that's what we're doing. That's the whole point of this handbook tonight, right? And that's why, that's where I think the anger toward you sometimes comes from, right? Because your failure to sign this handbook is kind of like saying to people, I'm not going to abide by it. I'm going to do my own thing, like it or not, right? That's... Might not be what you're trying to say, but that's what's coming across, right? So that's what we need to make an effort to fix, right?
I will say this. In thinking about taking roles of leadership with this current board, it is beyond difficult.
Right.
Because it feels like...
It's a no-win situation.
People are looking for you to step out of... A toe out of place so that people can come for you. That's what it feels like.
Sure.
And so, like, it makes people not want to raise hands to be a part of this in the future. I think this is a lot to what Debbie was saying. Like, it makes us all look bad because of the conduct we have. Yes, we need to hold each other accountable. We need to be respectful. And we need to hold each other to a certain standard. Yes, maybe the standard I hold myself to is not the standard you all hold yourself to. But we have to figure out a way to move forward and come to some common definitions of standard of leadership in this town. And we have to agree that we are going to hold each other accountable respectfully because coming at people, like, the fear of being a good leader versus making a mistake and not having grace is a real fear that I have right now. Because I am fine to say I made a mistake. It's like, how far does everybody want to take everything? Every word you say, every email you send, every... Like, it's fine if you don't believe that everybody on this board is here for good intentions. That's fine. But if people...
I'm not... Don't... I didn't say that.
Okay, fine. I didn't say anybody did say that. But I'm just saying, it feels like what the consensus is that people believe that some people are not here for all the same reasons. And so to me, like...
I'm sorry, Kay, I just have to object. I have no idea what you're talking about right now.
Neither do I.
And you're talking about your standards being different than others' people's standards? I'm not really sure what that meant either. So I just want to be...
I think that a little degree of humility for all of us will go along with it here, right?
Everybody to be truthful here. Let's all be truthful.
Yeah.
I mean, you literally pointed out a paragraph and had words with Mary Ellen, maybe rightfully so, that we all just admitted other people have violated also. So it's like, if we are going to draw a line in the sand and say from this point forward, we are holding ourselves accountable, we all have to hold ourselves accountable. So that means everybody's not calling people in town hall, not just the people other people are calling. Do you know what I mean? Like, it just feels a little pot-kettle situation because it feels like we're not all holding ourselves... We're holding certain people to standards, but we're not all holding ourselves to that standard. That's what I'm saying.
And to my point, this was poor governance. We did it. I want to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Great.
So that way, we're not repeating the same mistakes. That way, it's not... It was an $8,400 problem this time. I want to make sure it's not a $20,000 problem next time or a $40,000 problem or whatever. I want to make sure that this board all has the same information. I want to make sure that we're all on a level playing field so that way, when we walk into meetings, when we walk into special town meetings, when we walk into annual town meetings, that we all have the same information, that one or two individuals don't have more information than the rest of us. So we can all work together.
Great. I agree.
That's fair.
That is fair.
That's fair.
That's fair.
So yes, I will hold you to account. And I do think that, I think that given that this bill hasn't been paid, I think we should take this to a town meeting and have it paid.
I mean, you and Doug sent out a letter on your behalf, and you didn't tell the board you were going to send it.
On your behalf?
In the public.
It's very frustrating for you to...
Select board members.
I didn't know. I didn't know that was happening.
I didn't know it was happening. I didn't know until when I found out post it going out through...
Yeah.
The intent of the letter was to blow up the Pine Street issue.
So let's just understand this goes... This goes five ways equally, five ways equally, right? Let's all just own our part.
Yes.
Let's all have a little bit of humility and...
Have humility and hold ourselves accountable. We all need to do that.
Right. I mean, we all can think of five instances that everybody else at this table has done something unsavory, let's say, right? Or not playing by the rules. Let's be honest, right? Let's just commit. Let's own it. Let's commit to doing better. That's, you know...
I will commit to doing better.
I will too.
I will also.
I think we should pay this bill and move forward.
That's it.
Get a policy or whatever it is you want in there.
I mean, if there are recommendations... If there are recommendations for a policy, we should put it on the next agenda.
Yes, let's do that.
Yes, absolutely.
Right now, what is on the agenda is the bill. So I will entertain a motion on the bill.
So I'll make a motion to pay the bill.
I have a second.
So what do we do now? Discuss it? What do we... How does this work?
Well, if nobody seconds it, there's nothing to discuss.
No, because you can just second it. So in the handbook, you can second now.
Oh, okay. Well, Danielle, did you just second it?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're having a discussion.
So Doug, to your point, why would we not pay the bill at this point? Why would we vote no? Can you help me understand? Like, what... Is there a reason that I'm missing that we would vote to not pay this bill?
I have no desire to rehash the whole thing, but...
Other than this whole thing that has occurred?
For lots of reasons, you talked, wasn't really authorized, yada, yada, yada. You know, we went off and got one second opinion. It just happened to be confirmatory one way, you know. We didn't have a discussion about what your lawyer would get, you know. There's lots of reasons I can feel very fine about, like, $8,000. We're sitting there scrubbing for $100 at a time, you know. It's not nothing in this... There's lots of reasons why.
Even though it's there and allocated.
Absolutely, yeah. And I guess there is, you know, of course, at first we heard it wasn't. Then we heard it was, you know. I mean, it's...
Yeah, can you speak on that?
I can confirm that it's a... I received an email from a former finance director saying that she put $10,000 into the shuffle to pay this bill.
Didn't we vote to approve the shuffle?
This is why I question why this is coming up now.
Yeah, I don't...
And I'm questioning the motivation behind somebody doing this at this point because we are simply trying to create drama with that, right?
That's the motivation.
This is not the way to do it. Yes, it was wrong, but yes, let's double down on it and let's create a drama situation that we don't need right now because we've got pressing issues we do need focus on.
And just to be clear, as I understand it, Gino, just... I don't believe this invoice was in the shuffle. There's money in a different line. Is that correct?
She put $10,000 in the shuffle to pay this bill for years.
Under the legal line item?
Yes, she put an additional $10,000 in that legal...
So you guys already approved any of the bills?
So what are we even talking about?
Because we didn't know it. I mean, because we were relying on the previous email that she sent saying it wasn't in there, right? The whole point of the discussion last time was our understanding was that it wasn't in there. So I don't quite understand, Gino, like, frankly, I'm sorry, but like, that meeting was on July 8th.
And the email came to me trying on the 9th.
Yeah.
I'm telling you what I got. I have no reason to make this up.
All right, well, what I suggest we do is we still...
Wait, we have a motion on the floor, right?
Okay.
What I suggest we do is there's a motion on the floor. We vote on the motion, and that way, there is no... Unclearity is not a word. What is the word I'm looking for? Confusion, that we are approving the invoice to be paid regardless of whether it got paid in the shuffle or if it's going to get paid now. So all those in favor of approving the invoice to be paid? Aye. Opposed?
Politely, no.
No. She could attack me.
I am voting aye, because I want this put to bed. I don't see the benefit of dragging this out.
Three to two. Whether we paid it in the shuffle already or not, it is going to be paid. And we will, I commit to adding a line item on the next meeting that discusses how whatever safeguards need to be put in place so that something like this does not happen again.
Great, please.
And I would love to hear us all commit. I know David and I just did.
I did.
Doing better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mary Ellen?
Yeah.
I got it. I'm asking you point blank?
I just said, yeah. What more do you want?
Listen.
I just said, yeah.
Good, thank you.
All right, do we want... Why don't we take...
Break with an ambulance contract?
What else could we do? Can we go to Pine Street?
Yeah, let's go to Pine Street. Well, first of all, the...
It's 9:30.
The T.A. search committee update discussion and possible vote, they're not joining us, right?
They are not. They are interviewing. I have been told they are interviewing all week.
So I will entertain a motion for a vote to extend them to 8:24, 25.
So I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that takes care of that. Now, let's move on to Pine Street. What?
Ambulance, the ambulance contract.
Oh, you want to do the ambulance contract? That's fine.
Please.
So let's move to the ambulance contract.
Oh, that's why you're here?
Graham, I apologize. I have to use the ladies room. I am not trying to walk out while we move on to you, but if you guys could get started, I'd be really happy.
Do you have anything you want to summarize on the contract? You don't need to. Just want to give you the opportunity if there's any... If you can just give a very brief summary for everyone's sake, like...
We've been contracted with Cattaldo Ambulance for over 10 years to provide ambulance service to the town. The town of Swampscot and Marblehead. Our contracts kind of go together because due to population size and the number of incidents, it's basically not economically feasible for any ambulance company to just contract with one geographically remotely either town unless they have some more in the area. So for a lot of reasons, 10 years ago, it made sense to go with Cattaldo because they may be the longstanding contractor in the state, certainly in this area. Over the years, we've negotiated different levels of service. And when Marblehead... So as I said, Swampscot has been... Oh, sorry. I put it over there. Sorry. As I said a while, Swampscot has been out of contract with Cattaldo for a while. We did a couple of one-year extensions, but when Marblehead came out of contract, was coming out of... Expiring out of contract at the same time, we thought it was a good time to roll up our sleeves and do a little bit more due diligence before contaming our relationship with Cattaldo. And we did that, and we got some really interesting feedback from other ambulance companies. First among those was Beaufort Ambulance. So to summarize, you know, very broadly, the proposal that we've provided you from Beaufort meets or exceeds every aspect of the proposal of the contract that we've been under with Cattaldo for 10 years. And the level of staffing, the response times, the community engagement, Beaufort has really, really worked hard on making a very appealing contract wherein they, you know, they commit to four community-sponsored... Beaufort-sponsored community events for the police, fire, senior center, and schools, and things such as hands-on CPR training, first responder training, and things like that. You know, they match anything Cattaldo's offered as far as like being present for special events. Beaufort has offered to return to organizations within the town. It's important wording there because they can't return money to the town, but 5% of their profits to organizations in the town to be decided upon in conference with the town what non-profit organizations or entities in the town they could return that money to. They've really gone over and above on what they've offered to go to the town. So I know my counterpart in Marblehead, Chief Gilliland, Thatcher Keizer, Gino and myself are really excited to bring the Beaufort contract to you. We think it's going to be an improvement in service. And they have committed to an even higher level of as far as a mixture of ALS response versus BLS response. So it's a higher level of service. It's more community engagement. At the front, I should have led with either... Any of the contractors we spoke to, it's a zero bid. They don't charge the town for their services. They make money by billing insurance companies, Medicare, all the patients. So we've provided you after doing a lot of due diligence with the contract from Beaufort Ambulance. And we recommend... We are both out of contract now. We recommend signing as soon as possible. Beaufort's hoping for an August 1st start.
Great.
And this contract also goes, we're working for a licensing agreement for the former police station at 86 Borough Street, which is currently occupied by Atlantic Cattaldo. And we'd like to move them out and move Beaufort in within the next month.
Will they be paying the same... Do we have to set a...
We're hoping. Graham and I talked about that. We think we may need to increase the rent.
Yeah, we might, we might, we're going to reconsider what the, what the rate is.
So you'll propose a rent, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
So, same, no cost?
No cost.
We think, and know, they've done other places just as good a service, if not better?
Yeah, yes. Um, so, you know, Bowport's been around for quite a long time. Um, you know, in the seventies, they actually moved out of the, uh, emergency response and did more transports. Um, the current owner is the son of the founder, John, John Morris, um, really impressive fellow. Um, uh, he's moved the company back into emergency ser- emergency service. So they, they do, uh, work in Hamilton, Gloucester. Um, they're back up for Boston. Um, there are a couple of other communities that are actually listed in there. So, yes. So, sorry, go ahead, Doug. Um, yep. So, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Motion to approve?
Well, we...
Second.
This is just the first, this is, this is the first, um, reading of the contract, so...
But it does say possible votes.
Hmm?
It is, while it is the policy of the board that we have two readings normally, it's not required. So if vote is, if the board is so inclined to approve the contract.
He just said you need it by August first, right? Ideally?
I understand your policy to have two readings. I would recommend, um, it's a little, it's, it's, it's a little sensitive where we're moving Cataldo out. They've been here for a long time.
Okay.
Sequencing, moving them out of the building, and some setting their contract, and moving Bowport in. It, you know, we have the...
You need it.
We need it. We have, you know, events coming up. We've got the, the, um, um, the...
Block party.
The block, thank you. The, the block party. We'll, we need standbys for that. It's like, we're at a point where I, it's, it's a little uncomfortable asking Cataldo to do it when they know they're going to be leaving.
Sure, of course.
They're going to be leaving, so, um, yes.
Might be slow response time, yeah.
I would say just in, just to make sure we're perfectly clear with the board, there's one small change in the contract for you. We've, um, on advice of Town Council, we took, we took the language for insurance requirements, forwarded it to our insurance carrier. They came back with a change on the auto liability from one million to five million, and Bowport pushed back on that and said that, that's, it, it's cost prohibitive to, to do that. All the provisions in the insurance, um, meet or exceed what we've had and currently have with Cataldo. They're all, at least where Cataldo is, or, and most of them are higher. Um, but the five million was kind of a try for our insurance company.
So how does that work then? So are you saying our insurance company has pushed back?
No, no, no. This is for Bowport's, Bowport's, uh, automobiles, their, their, their trucks, what their insurance coverage is.
Okay.
If someone sues them. So...
And the new number is one million dollars?
And then this is one, which is, this is the same as we have with, with Cataldo.
All right, so we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of approving the ambulance service agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? None. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Graham.
Graham, for all the hard work on this. Andrew's speaking around. Okay.
Where are we on now? Pine Street?
Pine Street. We have, we, the agenda has the conversation of the one point five to rehab Borough Street first.
Yes, it does.
By, by design, Doug? You're looking at me, yes? Okay, great.
Is that okay?
It's your agenda. I'm just facilitating it. Because I wasn't here to create it. So if there's a method to your madness, I'm willing to play it out.
There is, yes. Uh, okay, so, um, if for, um, to try to bring resolution, uh, to this, uh, long saga, we, I think, hopefully it's clear to everybody that's really been paying attention that everybody wants veterans housing. And the major squabble we've been having all along is about the post, and whether or not we can fit it there somehow, or if it needs to be somewhere else. Okay? So, um, this is, uh, my, I'll take responsibility, um, uh, for trying to get to a closure and full solution to this overall project, which is to say that, um, if, assuming all goes well, uh, with Bene Brith, um, eventually we'll get, the town will get, uh, a rental payment of one point five four million dollars, um, for letting them use that property for ninety-nine years. Uh, that will come after closing. Correct me if I'm wrong. Timing.
At closing.
At closing.
Yep.
Yeah. So if we proceed with, uh, the, uh, housing, as it, the schematic design that we saw earlier and will be voting on tonight, uh, moves forward in that, uh, in that way, this proposal is to have the select board commit, uh, the one point five million that we'll be getting, um, from the rental payment to ensure that the post actually gets, uh, built right in a very modern, fully ADA, uh, as best as possible way, uh, within that, you know, rather old building. But they were not, we're not committing everything and anything. Uh, it's not unlimited, but we do have this one point five million. If we had built the post there, we pretty much would have used that up with the building of the shell and then the actual build-out, uh, roughly speaking. So the idea here is let's, you know, put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we're actually going to, uh, be true to the vets and really move the post and really deliver to them, uh, a post that's, uh, you know, appropriate and usable and, uh, in good, modern condition. So that's the basis.
And Doug and I met with council and Gino this week to understand how we go about doing that.
Yep.
Um, and which, they gave us two options.
They did?
Do you want to go to that?
Yep, there are two options. Um, uh, first is, when the money comes in, uh, it goes into an account, a separate account called Proceeds From Sale of Real Estate Account. Um, and then after that, then Town Meeting would, uh, appropriate those funds to the actual rehab of the building. Uh, and that would require a majority vote of Town Meeting if we took that path. Okay? The other path...
Sorry, just to clarify, we do not need Town Meeting's approval to put the proceeds in that account. We can do that. What we need Town Meeting's approval for is to appropriate and move those funds to renovate the building.
The other option is, um, that we, uh, create a special purpose stabilization fund, uh, that would be very specific to eighty-nine Borough. The, the slight drawback, and even after our conversation, I'm still a little fuzzy on this. The slight drawback to the first approach is that these funds go into that account. Nothing happens until the closing. Then you have to have a town meeting. And at that point, we're a year and a half, two years down the road, and God knows who's around, or what they remember, or what the priorities are, or what happens. So there's a little bit of vagueness there about whether or not definitively those monies actually get spent on the post, or there's something else that could happen at that point. So that's the drawback there.
Couldn't we do an M O U?
A what?
An M O U.
Could we do a memo of understanding?
To solidify that? So there is no question? There is no vagueness?
With that approach, it didn't appear that. I mean, maybe...
I think to Danielle's point, we could, we could all sign it to say this is the understanding and intention of the funds. However, it's still...
Has to be implemented by whoever's here, right?
To spend those funds.
Yeah.
Town Meeting has the ability to spend those funds. So even though we can say it is the intention of the board that we're putting this money aside for this purpose, we can be very clear and we can all sign it.
It might mean nothing.
We have no authority to spend it. Town Meeting has authority to spend it. So we need to rely on their majority vote to spend.
Got it.
Which is kind of true in the other scenario too. I think it's more of a timing thing and specificity thing. So let me get to the, the second one, is a special purpose stabilization fund. In this situation, at this upcoming town meeting, before we get the funds at all, we would create that special purpose stabilization fund. There would be any money in it, but it would be dedicated to eighty-nine Borough. We'd have this discussion while it's still kind of fresh in everyone's mind, and, uh, the account would be set up, basically. We'd, everyone would be, you know, hopefully, uh, generally in approving, uh, in approval of that. And then, once the...
That requires a two-thirds.
Ah, thank you. That requires a two-thirds vote, though, to set up that's...
To create the stabilization fund.
So a little bit higher threshold, but you get the specificity. And then, once the funds come in, there's a second vote that has to happen to actually appropriate.
Appropriate the money.
And that call, that's a two-thirds vote as well?
That one is not. That's a majority vote.
Okay. Just like the other one.
Okay.
Got it.
But the funds in, the funds in the stabilization account are protected, and they can only be used for a purpose, as you know, in stabilization accounts. They're very specific as to purpose. So the funds couldn't get spent for another reason. So Town Meeting could not appropriate those funds under the stabilization fund, but they couldn't go to anything else.
And then we're stuck.
And then we're stuck, yeah.
So, uh, there's like pros and cons, obviously, to both these. Um, I, I would recommend we actually go to the special purpose stabilization fund because while we're stuck, what, we're not actually totally forever stuck. There would have to be yet another vote of Town Meeting to release the funds into some other fund. You could always extract them. Say, we, say we spent one point two million, and everyone, you know, the eighty-nine Borough was perfect, and, you know, the post was perfect. We still have three hundred thousand dollars in there. You could still come back and say, oh, we're going to take those funds back, and they could go somewhere else. Town Meeting would do that. So... So, that's my proposal, is that we go forward with, uh, a vote of this board to create, uh, to recommend to Town Meeting that we create a special purpose stabilization fund for the rehabilitation of eighty-nine Borough.
Are you making that motion?
Uh, in the, to the tune of one point five million dollars. Yes, I'm making that motion.
And I will second that motion.
I would too. Okay.
Great. Uh, is there further discussion? Questions?
No, I would, to be honest, I would just, I feel like I would rather have a little bit of time to think about this. I mean, I, of course, I do want to see the post rehabbed, make sure that it was up to par, you know, better than what they have right now. I'm just... You know, it's just, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, so it's just a little tough for me to jump on board. Also, with the, um, like, what, it's just, it would just, just want to think about it a little bit.
This, this is just, this, this is just this board's vote to advance this to a special town meeting or an annual town meeting warrant.
Yeah.
This provides that guy, guidance to town staff as well as councils to in, to include warrant language. So, I mean, it may be the first time, uh, that you're hearing about it, but I do think that, you know, we did make a, we did make a commitment to the veterans. We did make a, a commitment. We are, you know, this board did vote to move them from their, from their post and move them to Borough Street. And I think we owe it to them to allocate these funds in such a way that their new home is, um, is top-notch. So I, I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is. There's a motion. There's a second.
Yeah.
I think we should provide that direction tonight.
And I think too, um, you know, when we had this major discussion, one of my key, um, reasons for voting for it was that we were going to commit to doing something for the veterans, and as long as we did that, I felt comfortable voting the way I did. And I think that does, this does that, you know, and I, so I would, that's why I would feel good about it.
I think too, it's important, most of this meeting we've spent feeling a little less unified than we should be. And I think it's important in taking steps forward to repair some of the things that occurred, that we, to David's language, put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah.
Like, take action on the commitments we make and not just make them words. So I have no problem voting on this tonight.
And to be honest about it, right, we had, amongst the five of us, it was a contentious vote. So this is something that means a lot to both of you, like, to your point, like, to bring a little bit of closure to this process that was difficult. Like, I, I would support that for that purpose alone, but I also want to support it for the veterans because we did commit to doing something for them.
Right.
Right, so that...
I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate Mary Ellen's point, I, because I, I'm not hearing from Mary Ellen, a real concern about the, at least what I'm hearing from you, it's not about the substance, about the one point...
No, it's not about the substance. I'm, that's all it is. It's just a technical...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's not about the substance whatsoever. I've, I've said that the additional monies that are coming through need to go into, um, rehabilitating.
So, um, would it be reasonable if we proceed tonight, uh, hearing what you're, I understand the whole concern, you're just hearing it just for the first time,
Right.
with the open door to say, you know, hey, if we, if we've learned something over the next two weeks, two months, whatever it is,
Yeah, yeah.
we realize, hey, actually, this other path was better.
Right.
Open door to bring it back and technically correct what our path is.
Right, if I, because I do know that sometimes when you, there are certain stabilization funds, there is technical provisions within them, and that we, it can keep us away from money. Like, right now, we have a fund where we have about a little over three hundred thousand dollars in a fund that we cannot spend the money except for on a new property. So we've, we've got three hundred thousand dollars sitting in our accounts that we can't touch until we buy a new property. So there's just a couple little financial hangups there.
Maybe we can nuance the vote too to say, as we understand it today, with the ability to extract any excess money, and if anything, should change.
And the other thing is making sure that we have a lot of room, because Marzy's going to be applying for grants for, um, rehabilitating under the Disabilities Act.
You know, this, this is kind of the, the will of the board almost really at, at the moment. You know, we've got it, we've got a particular vehicle we're proposing right now. Ultimately, we'll have a, have a warrant. We'll, we'll have to actually...
We'll have to actually vote on it.
Of course, of course, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've always been in favor of this.
Yeah. Okay, so then...
Do you want to take a vote now?
I would love to take a vote now.
Great.
So all those in favor, Gino's ready.
Wow.
All those in favor of the, um, motion Doug presented of these, what does it call it?
Special Purpose Stabilization Fund for eighty-nine Borough.
For eighty-nine Borough, and one point five million dollars from the Pine Street payment, um, to go into it, uh, at closing.
For the rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation, and, uh, uh, perhaps a friendly amendment, rehabilitation and moving...
Oh, right.
The veterans from the post to Borough Street, because it's not just rehabbing, it's also physically helping them move.
Facilitating.
To facilitate, to facilitate that. So all those in favor of...
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay, so now we can move on to discussion impossible vote on twelve to twenty-four Pine Street schematic design. And folks are here from Bene. Thank you so much for being up so late.
I move approval.
Okay, second.
All those in favor? Are we joking or are we not? Because...
No, we're not joking, but we can discuss.
Great. All right.
I would also like to acknowledge that we have the Chair of the Planning Board on, on, online as well. I think Ted...
Oh, great. Fantastic.
Hi, Ted.
Thank you. Could you do the side panels so we could see? I know TD, you just explained. I think BD is fundamental, but who the other folks are, it's nice to see Diane.
Ted Dooly, yeah.
They should be able to...
No, if you could do the panels across so I can see who the full names are.
Ted Dooly, Mike Kelleher, I guess, right?
Okay.
Is that better?
Thank you. No, that's fine. Never mind. I can see them all now. Um, alrighty. So... Marzy, do you want to start?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Uh, so in your package, you should have...
Loss of consciousness over here.
Yeah, literally.
Exactly. So as you heard earlier from Gino today, it's really exciting that Bene Brith Housing received their project eligibility letter from the Executive Office of Housing Eligible Communities. Um, so that really gives pass, uh, provides a pathway for us to advance with the project. Uh, the next sort of, um, uh, threshold or, um, uh, a timeline that, that we should meet or a, um, milestone that we have to reach is to approve the schematic plans. So as you know, we received a, uh, copy of the schematic plans, and this board had requested that our planning board provide us with some feedback or comments in regards to the plan. Uh, once again, in your, in your package, you will receive the comments from the planning board, um, as well as, uh, response from the Bene Brith team. Uh, the comments range from, uh, requests to relocate or re-center the building, uh, to the center of the, of the parcel, to, as well as to look at the massing of the building, um, talked about, uh, trying to preserve some trees. Also had requested for some privacy and screening from the, from the porch on the second floor. And again, uh, it, uh, look at parking as well as, it did complement the, uh, the design team and the project proponent in regards to the architectural features and the, uh, really blending in with the neighborhood really well and capturing the coastal New England character that we really wanted to, uh, to bring in into Swambskut. I'm happy to go through, I'm not sure if, if you'd want us to have the Bene Brith really share their feedback or if there's anything else that you want to hear from the planning board right now.
Um, well, I guess, well, though, how does the board want to handle this? Do we want to go through, I mean, I don't think we want to go through line by line at all, planning boards items unless you do.
I looked at the planning board's notes.
What was that, Danielle?
I looked at the planning board's notes and what they had.
I will admit that I didn't realize they were here.
Okay, so...
But that doesn't mean we should go through.
It would seem to me like what we have to decide if the planning board's comments are going to be our comments to Bene such that Bene has to modify the proposal to incorporate them. I think Bene answered some of these...
That's correct.
Concerns.
Yep.
So maybe we'd best to hear from Bene to just figure out which ones they've answered, so we don't have to worry about those, um, if there are any, and which ones maybe are off the table or modified based on the feedback from the planning board. Does that make sense? Is that okay? Holly, Yara?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, the first item from the Chair is the privacy screening, the privacy and screening adjacent to Erie Street.
Is there a reason we're...
I'm just using the front page for the top four items here.
Page, because I have, I have this, moving into the center of the lot is the...
Yeah, building placement and site layout.
Is there a reason?
That's the next one.
That will be on the next page.
So Ted did a very nice...
Yeah.
...summary, which is not as dense as the chart in the back on the very first page to us.
Some of those finance people like the grid.
Okay. I'm very wordy, I guess. So, um, go ahead, Yara, Holly, sorry.
So, uh, um, I'm not sure what paperwork you're all looking at, but hi, I'm Holly Grace from Bene Brith. Nice to see all of you. What documents you have in front of you?
Um, well, I guess we have a letter from the Chair of the Planning Board to the Select Board. The cover letter of it is a, um...
Four points, about.
Four points that they wanted to highlight for us to consider. And I guess for us to consider...
And really, two of them are non-points.
The reason the grid, if I may, is how, is just because like, you have the comment from the planning board summarized, and then you have already the response from Bene Brith right there.
I don't have a grid in my package, so...
Oh, you don't? Do you want, I can give you mine if you like.
I have a grid.
And do you have that in front of you? This is a response memo that we prepared in response to...
Yes.
I don't have that particular document because I received my packet early, so I...
You should have been in the little packet, the little other packet.
Yeah, there's a lot of papers here, Diane.
It's after the pictures.
It might be here somewhere. I apologize, but I don't see it anywhere. Okay, thank you, Marzy. Appreciate it. All right, so, uh, Doug, fair point. Let's take it like that. Okay, so the building placement, layout and site, this is the roof, the, uh, spreadsheet, spreadsheet rubric, whatever you want to call it. Um, so the comment from the planning board was to move the building to the center of the lot and turn the entrance to Erie Street. Do you want to just summarize and answer?
Um, sure. I guess it would be very problematic to do this and co- have some consequences that, um, I think are less than ideal. Um, we provided a lot of detail on the matrix, um, but basically having two entrances is not ideal. The parking circulation, there's more curb cuts, there's less, potentially less parking, and also the floodplain concerns with shifting it over would result in the building appearing even taller than it is right now. Is that a sufficient...
Yes.
...overview of our sponsor?
Yes, Holly, thank you.
And just to make sure I'm, we're completely following... And just to make sure I'm completely following this, we have one memo from the Chair of the Planning Board, which is just two pages, four points.
Right.
We have a separate memo from a member of the.
Because they, what they did was they, they did not have a meeting. They ended up, the Chair asked people to send in their, their personal recommendations, so that's why. Have a separate.
Okay.
So, let's stick to just building placement and site layout, and just confirm then what our position will be, so that we can be really clear for Marzie, because she'll have to draft a letter or communicate to Bene. So, based on the response, do we feel like we are comfortable with the building placement as is? I know that Mr. Dooley also suggested just.
Six feet.
Six feet, I think, of movement, and I think some of the response is still valid, but maybe not all of it.
Where's this?
It was like 10 to 15 feet setback from Erie. And then it says, the current plan shows a reduced setback of roughly five feet. So, the difference between five feet to be 10 to 15 feet would be a difference of five to 10 feet of what they proposed.
Which is a little bit different issue. I mean, he's just talking setback there versus fully centralizing. You know, there's two different pieces, right? The first one is really fully centralizing was one.
Right.
Request, and I think that's what Holly just responded to.
Yeah, so I was just saying, this felt like, in a similar vein, if we're not going to move the building into the center, should we take on the consideration of the setback? Because I don't see the setback anywhere.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I guess this year, setback current.
Where is the setback in the matrix?
It's in the, in the second matrix.
Right.
Following table summarizes Ted Dooley Chairman. So, that's why, because one starts with Angela's comments and one starts with Ted's comments, so that's why.
Lord.
I apologize, Holly. All right. So, does anybody have any additional questions about Angela's comment related to centering the building? Or feedback for Holly on it? I mean, I think they've made enough points to understand why that can't happen.
Right.
Does anybody need additional clarity?
Nope.
Okay, great. The Angela's comments about the mass being too imposing and eliminating tower and deck. Holly, do you want to touch on that? That's the second item.
The second item. Um, so our, yeah.
We are in the matrix. That's the next item.
Sorry, Holly.
Would it be helpful if I share, would it be helpful if I share the memo?
No, we all have.
No, we all have it in front of us. I just was wondering.
But we have multiple, we have multiple memos.
No, we're only looking at this, the answer, though.
The, the matrix.
So, we're only looking at Angela's or Ted's?
Okay, yeah, I, I missed it too. All this on the front page, the grid, and onto the second is all in response to the centering of the building.
Right.
So, we've covered that. We're done with that.
Got it.
Now, we're on to the.
On to the next.
Building massing.
Building massing and height.
There you go.
Okay, I'm with you.
Now, we're pitching.
Angela made a comment that the massing was too imposing, and they, and she requested the elimination of the tower and deck.
Right.
So, in response, you guys said the tower was designed to break up the mass, the massing.
Yeah.
And articulate the corner entrance. The, a flat roof would make a building feel larger, more commercial. The sloped roof is a better fit for a residential context. And the additional renderings that show the building in context with the neighborhood homes were attached to the response by Bene. So that you could see what it might look like, looking down the street, for example, with current housing.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Where'd you get that?
This is at the end of the matrix.
All right.
Now, you won't have that one?
I don't have the matrix now. You're in the matrix now.
All right, well, I got mine from Marzie, so maybe that's why. But I'll show you guys, so you can see, like, if you're looking down the street view, you can see where the houses are, and then where, how the building is as proposed. So, you can see that the way they designed it was to fit in with the site lines.
Think good, think goodnessful in making it three stories.
Yara, could, could you bring that up?
Sure.
So, I guess having agreed, we're going to be better.
It's 10 o'clock.
Let me help you remind, let me help remind you.
Okay.
Beautiful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
This is the view down Pine Street and the view down Erie Street.
All right, looks like it fits in.
All right. So, just with regards to that comment by Angela about building mass and height, does anybody have feelings or additional feedback they want to share? Or do they feel like they understand Bene's situation about why they feel like that's not?
We don't see the tower really in this view. Is that correct?
Correct.
No, the tower, yeah.
Because we, we previously had it in the schematic design. I can bring the renderings up. The, the two renderings that were included in the, in this, in our memo were new renderings that showed different perspectives that hadn't been presented before. But this, this is the tower, so this is the schematic design set that I'm sharing now, which you guys have previewed, have previously seen, and this is the tower she is referencing.
Yeah. Okay, so does, if there's no additional comments or questions for Bene, we can move on to the next item, which is that parking is inadequate. So, I think we've talked about this.
We've already talked about the.
Ad nauseam.
Ad nauseam.
So, unless anybody has any additional questions, we can move on.
Nope.
Okay. Landscaping, tree removal for convenience. The answer, the developer has contracted an arborist, and will reassess removal and explore saving more trees. I think we had given that feedback, whatever, a month ago when we started the conversation, so appreciate that. I think that's, Marzie, something that when we're providing feedback, we request that they do, they have committed to doing it, but just to put it in writing. Okay, so the next table, that is all of Angela's commentary. Other than the trees, is there anything the board wishes to have Marzie add for feedback to Bene?
I don't.
For me? Okay.
Nope.
So, then let's move on to Ted's, Mr. Dooley's comments. The first one is privacy and screening. So, the comment is, there's a screening recommended for the second floor amenity deck along back of the property to mitigate privacy and noise impacts. We'd actually brought this up a month ago also, and they agree to do that. So, Marzie, that is something we could give feedback on, even though they've agreed. The next one is the setback. Oh, sorry, does anybody have any further? Okay.
Nope.
The next one is the setback. So, unlike Angela where she wanted to centralize the building, Ted just suggested that we move from a five-foot setback to a 10 to 15-foot setback, which would be a five to 10-foot adjustment. And the comment is increasing the setback to align with the neighborhood character and to bright. Sightlines would reduce parking capacity by four to five spaces and shift the driveway curb cuts, causing an, an issue at the intersection.
Okay, so that does, okay, because, because in ours, it just says, reduce parking capacity. So, you're quantifying.
Marzie says.
Four to five.
Four to five.
Marz has got the teacher's version of this.
No, it's a second, it's on the, did you see it on the board?
This is the, this is the most up to date.
Okay.
And then it would shift the driveway curb cut closer to the intersection, which will cause issue with circulation there, is the.
Would it make it more dangerous?
But I'm a little confused. If we're talking about setback, why are we talking about the parking? I mean, you don't need to.
Well, I think, I think if you move the setback.
You lose parking.
You're going to lose parking on the other side.
So, if it's helpful, Yara could share the site plan?
Yes.
The site right now is engineered very tightly, and the, the parking spaces on the left side of, of the image that Yara's about to share are the next one right here. I was, I was double checking, I was sharing the right thing. Okay, here we go.
I, I get it. I get it now, if I'm the only one. I mean, it was Erie that Ted's really asked about.
Yeah, because he's.
The Erie's pushing the whole building.
The whole thing shifts over, the driveway needs to shift over, and so we'll lose some parking spaces. So, this is, you know, Select Board, tell us, what's the priority of the community in the town? Do you want the setback, or do you want the maximum number of parking spaces? And if we subtract five, which we think is probably still doable and comfortable for the population we're serving, we can do that. But this, we leave this up to you.
We can't lose any more parking.
No, I don't know, I don't know how we lose any more parking, to be fair. And I know we're choosing, like, this is Sophie's Choice situation, because both of them are detrimental. Like, a detriment to the, to the neighborhood, but I would think that there's already a parking issue.
Parking is an issue.
And so.
There might be a little bit of a happy medium. Ted's got his hand up. Can, Yara, war, maybe, can you go back to the, the view down the street to illustrate what, maybe what Ted's getting at in terms of the character of the street and the setbacks there? Could, I mean, maybe.
Are you guys seeing?
Yes, we are.
Yep.
Ted, do you want to comment on this? If the board's comfortable, we can let him. Diane, could you unmute Ted for us, please?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Ted?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apologize for not having my video on. I barely survived bedtime with a three-year-old, so I'm just catching up here. Anyway, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I think in terms of the setback conversation, what we're really referring to is there's about two dozen homes that go down Erie Street from Eastern Avenue all the way down to the intersection with Pine Street. All of them have a standard setback of roughly 10 to 15 feet back from, from the street. So, our suggestion here is to obviously match that as close to that setback as we can. Reality, we understand there's give and take here, so it might not need to be perfect, but as, as Doug mentioned, maybe there's a happy middle ground there. A few things that I would suggest as to why we're suggesting this, obviously matching neighborhood character is super important. But also, I think as this view particularly emphasizes, it underscores the massing of the building, which we can all understand is, is large by nature, we're, we agree to that. But we're, by placing the building in a reduced setback area, especially when we're impacting sightlines at the intersection with Pine Street, really magnifying that massing. So, moving it back another five to 10 feet, if it's possible, I think would be something we would very highly recommend, and that was something that not only came up in my comments, but in other comments from members of our board. A suggestion that I would look to is section, I believe, 3230 of our local zoning bylaws allow for up to 25% of the parking to be compact parking spaces, so an 8.5-foot width instead of a nine, a standard nine-foot width. That might allow for a handful of spaces to have a slightly reduced width to make up for some of that, some of that distance, to hopefully find a happy medium there. But I would encourage and look at that specifically, and again, not something to deny a project for by any means whatsoever, just to encourage figuring out a way to make something work a little bit in the middle there, so we're not creating a building where we're intentionally magnifying massing when we have an opportunity potentially to, to decrease the negative impact of that, especially in an intersection where sightlines are going to be particularly important.
So, so, so Ted, has public, has public safety weighed in, in any way, shape or form about those sightlines as, as folks would be turning from Erie on to Pine Street? Are we, are we potentially creating a public safety issue?
I wouldn't go far to suggest, I wouldn't go as far as to suggest that. I have not had a conversation with any members of the Traffic Safety Committee or any members of the police force about this. Our comments are only reflective of the experience and the opinion of the planning board. But, but again, I think this view too gives a very good reflection of the building and the massing, but it also, you can kind of see sort of the Erie Street kind of doglegs there at the intersection, right where the building is. So, you can kind of see how that would impact sightlines as we move up to that intersection with Pine Street.
If, if the building was pushed back, say, 10 feet, right, like the, the greater part of your request, is there any sort of angular parking or, like, modified street parking that could be done there that might make up for some of those four to five lost spaces?
I would defer that to the proponents.
Yeah, I mean, almost to say, like.
Like head-in parking spaces?
Yes, exactly. Angular, head-in parking spaces. Is it possible with only 10 feet?
I think a, a parking space is closer to 18 or 20, I think, is part of the issue, and I would debate on a community impact, visual impact, whether a line of parking spaces that then reverses up into the public ways, the way to go. I think that's the big difference.
Fair, fair.
And again, just from our, to emphasize what ours, what the existing zoning bylaws, at least in Swambskut, say for parking, typical parking spaces are nine feet wide, 19 feet in depth, with the ability to reduce 25% of the total number of spots down to eight and a half feet by 16 feet for compact. So, that's why I suggest that as maybe something to consider, to help make up a few, a few feet there, and maybe that moves us towards something a little more productive, at least for our, our opinion.
Our parking plan and the schematic set includes compact spaces already, so we're already attempting to maximize the spaces in the parking lot.
We've already utilized that solution, which is good, but we're still at.
Unfortunately, that's not in our personal.
Yeah. Okay, so then I guess it would be good to have the board's feedback to understand if the priority is the setback, or if the priority is parking in this issue, in this particular issue, so that we can give feedback to.
I would say parking.
Yeah, I, I, let me just make sure before I answer that, like, make sure I'm doing. If, if we, if a parking spot is nine feet, so if we moved it back nine feet, additional nine feet setback, would we lose two parking spots?
I think we're going to lose more.
Yeah, I think we're going to lose.
We're going to lose a whole row.
I know, but I'm just. Well, but there's a row in the, close to the building, it's only two, so.
Well, we might lose one in that middle row, right? Well, I guess, because we don't have enough space. Go ahead.
Were, if you're able to see Yara's screen share?
Yes, we are.
Her little hand cursor is showing one, two, three.
Three, okay, yeah.
So, we're definitely losing those three.
So, what happens if we lose those three, and then we adopt the smaller parking spaces?
We already have adopted smaller.
We've adopted smaller for all of them?
Yes, no, not for all of them, but we only.
For the 25%?
But only 25% is what we're allowing.
So, we've already capped?
Yeah.
Already capped.
We're talking three parking spaces.
Yeah.
So, you'll be down to 35 parking spaces, a total of 35 from 38.
I think that's silly.
I mean, people can, you know, they can park on the street too, right? You know.
They already park on the street.
And they haven't done the parking study yet, so maybe there's some interplay here of, you know, our, you know, if, if it was the board's desire to increase the setback, you know, we could go two different ways. One, you could just increase the setback period and sacrifice the three, or only, only increase the setback if the parking study indicates that we only really need 35.
Ted, do you have a call on this?
Yeah.
Ted, are you still on?
Yeah, he's just unmuted.
Yes, yes, I am. I mean, I, I don't know how the process works for, for your board and votes and approvals tonight, but we're talking about five, 10 feet, maybe less. I think it's something that I would, if it were my, my board, I would highly encourage the applicant to get through tonight. Let's move forward, but let's visit how we can try and find a happy medium there. Because we have had projects where we've, as a planning board, have approved with similar concerns, and they get built, and then we see them and we hear them incessantly, and it's, gives us heartbreak. I can only speak for myself. Gives me heartburn. Want to hear about it knowing, yep, we could have done something. And my mentality is always, we want projects to get to a yes, not a no. And we never want to get to no, we just want to get to the right yes. So, I would be hopeful that over the ensuing months or weeks of conversation, there might be opportunities to find, maybe we get a couple more feet built in, so it's, it might not be perfect, but it's less of a concern.
I don't know if that's what we can do tonight. I think, don't we have to have a, a?
We have to give.
Bene, is Bene looking for a vote tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they need a vote tonight.
So, is there a way to vote it and still have consideration for the parking? Or to still, you know, have that be in play with a little bit of flexibility, or no? Do you need a conclusive answer right now?
So, it's my understanding that, and Marzie, chime in if you think this is wrong. So, the Select Board approves our plan, and then we move on to our plan set that we submit to the zoning board to start the comprehensive permit process. And I think that the choices, I see, are you can approve, or potentially approve with comment or condition that we will try to wrap into our comp permit submission. And as a, as the developer, the concern is that if there's a requirement that we shift the building over 10 feet, but no potential relief on losing parking spaces if it's needed to make this all work, then we have a problem. So, I'm trying to convey that we can be flexible on increasing a setback on this Erie Street side, with the understanding of all of you know that the building that squishes over. I, I think five feet is, an additional five-foot setback, is something we can do comfortably, but.
Yeah.
Comfortably, not affecting the parking.
But if it, if it starts getting. But if it, if it starts getting, getting bigger than that, we are dealing with losing parking spaces.
What happens?
Yara, if I come in and ask first?
What, but what happens if we say...
I just want to be clear, Holly, if you move the setback five feet, are you saying there is no loss of parking?
We have, we have a design, and Yara, if you could look...
No, no, that's fine.
Other side of the, I mean, I think, you know, if, this is showing, we currently have a five-foot setback from this, the street, and whether or not, how accurate this elevation or perspective drawing you've given you is not sure, hopefully it's a worst-case scenario. And if, can, can you zoom in there so they, hopefully you all can see this?
Yep, we can see it very well. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, there's two solid lines? Right, Yara? And one's the property line? And one's showing the sidewalk?
This is the property line here, and the sidewalk, it's here.
Yep.
And so, I, Yara, I think Yara and I can work with our team to add an additional five feet at this corner.
Okay.
I think that's the happy medium.
Maybe reconfiguring some things inside.
Okay.
And it's, we're very efficient as it is, so this is, this is hard, but I think we can do this. So, if your letter says, keep it five feet, I, I don't, of additional setback, I, I think we can do that. And Yara, are you feeling confident?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay.
I think that's the happy medium.
Yeah, but, you know, we'll, we'll try our best to do it either architecturally, or, you know, and then we'll, we'll see what we can do civil-wise, and then worst-case scenario, obviously, you know, if we, we can show that there's no other way around it to losing, you know, potentially losing spots, I don't know, but we will definitely make our best efforts to do that.
Well, let, let me ask you a question. What about if you were to design it, saying that you have a, you have a 10-foot, and you have to bring it into in front of the zoning board, and the zoning board says, listen, if you're gonna do 10 feet and you're gonna lose parking, we just can't have you lose parking, so just go, go back to the, the skinnier side of it. I'm just wondering, does the, does having to go to the zoning board give us a little bit more flexibility in this letter that we have to address? Because right now, tonight, we're looking at the letter.
No, we are required to approve the schematic designs. Under the LDA, it is our obligation to approve the schematic designs, so we need to...
Let's go with the five-foot...
So, let's go with what they're offering. Yeah, let's not overcomplicate it.
Yeah, happy medium.
Let's, go ahead, Ted.
Next issue.
Ted?
The applicant, in my opinion, has made a pretty good opportunity to meet, meet us in the middle there.
Yeah.
That's kind of what we all hope for, so...
Perfect.
Okay.
I think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benay.
Check.
Great. Moving on to architectural character, we...
Check, that's already done, right?
Great. They, they replied a response, so that's fine. I think if the board agrees, Marzi can integrate that comment into our comments, the architectural character. Moving on to the parking event use. Parking may be inadequate if a project involves, evolves to include events or auxiliary uses behind housing. Okay, there's no current plan for that, so great. So, it seems like with a five, with an additional five-feet setback, five-foot setback, and some...
From Erie Street, sorry.
Yes, from, just from Erie Street, correct, Holly, just on Erie Street, Marzi.
And is that, I was kind of wondering about that earlier. Is that in any way going to be odd for the setback to be different on Erie than Pine? The way it just kind of sits in the neighborhood? Is it, is it symmetrical right now, and this will make it non-symmetrical, and does that end up mattering, or is it...
No, it's not symmetrical.
No, I think it'd be fine.
Okay. Great. More agreement, wonderful. Okay, so now we're looking at this new ecology document that Doug has held up for me to move on to next.
Yeah, it's...
But that's not part of the, that's not part of the...
No, that's not part of the vote, right?
That was just something that we had a discussion at the last meeting, and the developer, the development team wanted to put it together so you can see sort of what was included.
What their energy, their resilience, their work.
Okay.
Sustainability.
But we had, but Doug had brought up the conversation of whether we should be providing some of these comments relative to the schematic design, and asked for some feedback from you guys, and you've given it to us, so...
Correct. And I, I just, seeing this tonight, no, I just saw it tonight, so I, you know, the fundamental thing, you know, is by regulation, they have to meet specialized opt-in codes, so obviously that's happening.
Yep.
I guess the remaining question I still have, I, and I, I don't, maybe it's here, so I apologize if I haven't seen it yet. In, in terms of, we talked about last time, the roof structure, and it being PV, PV-ready, how do, how do you see that actually? Do you have any more thoughts about how that's playing out in reality, or not yet?
Not, we do, we are, we will be committing to, you know, as I was saying, to be PV-ready, and we will study, you know, as much, we understand that sort of the layout of this roof is, you know, is, is a different scenario as than a flat roof, but we will be definitely studying the possibility of putting as much solar, you know, as possible on, on this type of roof. But we will make it solar PV-ready as well.
So, you're, you're committing it to being solar PV-ready, and potentially, the project will actually include some solar?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I guess, given the comments that we've noted from planning board, that the Select Board wished to adapt, Marzi, you have a list of them?
Could I just go over them with you quickly, if you don't mind? So, the first one, in terms of landscape, the proponent will contract with an arborist to reassess the tree removals.
Yep.
The proponent will install privacy screening on the fencing. The proponent will increase the setback on the Erie side by five feet for a total of 10 feet off of Erie Street. Will make positive comments, acknowledge the comments in regards to architectural character and parking, we're silent, we're not including any comments.
Yeah, the only additional comment I would make regarding privacy is the noise impact mitigation.
Okay.
To maybe, if you look at Ted's, the notes from the rubric, I think...
Okay, noise.
They've agreed to both, so we should ask for both.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve the schematic designs with comments, as Marzi just detailed?
I motioned a while ago.
Second. Oh, we, we motioned a while ago? And seconded? Sorry, again, late.
I was kind of joking.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that that happened, sorry.
Rule call? What do we have to do?
Yeah, let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-oh, just as Doug likes it.
Thank you, Yara.
Thank you very much, Yara.
Yara, thank you, Holly.
On so long.
Thank you, Marzi.
Thank you, Ted.
You should hit. That better really not be Stella Phelan who just joined the call.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She might be a different version of Thailand time. All right, the last item on the new and old business is discussion impossible vote on the mission or definition of the future financial summit. We table it till next, okay, we will table it, but I, I do just really quickly want to say, like, I do want each of us to put some thought into this, because I've asked also FinCom and school committee to also have similar conversations before we get there, so that we can be proactive in the information that we're bringing to the table and the topics that we're going to discuss once we get there. Because my fear is that we show up and people have a different idea of what's going to happen, and then people feel not positive about having it. So, I think we all need to come to a conclusion on what we hope to accomplish there, and what the agenda looks like, so that we can all be on the same page of what success is.
I do think in advance of that, it is critical, based on what happened last week, when you were not here, the conversation that Charlie initiated, Charlie Patzios, with the question mark about the Clark School and entertaining that possibility with Max and the school department, I feel like that would precipitate a financial summit, because that's kind of a piece of that, or there's, there needs to be some type of joint meeting, in my view, to address that piece, right? The question mark that is Clark School, because I think that's, Charlie brought up some great points, Max had some great points with his RFP and the school department and whatnot, so we need some type of, my opinion, some type of group discussion.
Yeah, I, I did have a subsequent, I think, it's a little bit of a blur, subsequent conversation with Gino after that meeting. Gino, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we wrote down, like, trying to get together, like, a little bit of a, a working group to do some preliminary, like, fact coalescing amongst the different parties, to prepare for a broader joint meeting. Because there was, there's a lot of, like, trying to figure, a, a big overarching piece of this, and I actually talked about this with the superintendent, when I met with him today, we really need to understand where the middle school is landing, it seems to me. Like, that is just a big whale of a, of an issue kind of out there, and if it's going to land in the next five years, it's a big difference versus the next 10 years.
Right.
And for our capital planning, financial summit, and particularly for the Clark School and the ramifications for that.
Yeah.
So, I, I do think that we need Max to really kind of weigh in and collect information about the pros and cons, and maybe he's already doing that, but that's a big input, I think, to this whole...
We're also trying to get a tri-chair meeting on the schedule for the chairs of the three boards, so we can start that discussion...
Right.
In that, in that context, and just sort of take a temperature that way.
Because I don't want to just kind of forget about, you know, Charlie and his suggestions and his questions, and, you know, and Max with his RFP, and, you know, so there's a bigger discussion necessary.
Yeah, and I also don't want the school to feel like they don't have all the options that they want, because we're not there in control of that building.
Right, right.
And they're paying for it, and if they want to, yes, they need permission for us to go out to RFP or RFI, they, they...
Because it sounds like to me, like, that they're not looking to hold on to that long-term.
Right.
They might need it temporarily, and then maybe, you know, housing can take over longer, who knows, but...
Yep, okay. So, we will table, Diane, if you can make a note to put that on the next agenda, we will do, we will have a further discussion of that. Approval of the consent agenda, we have some items on the consent agenda.
Oh, can you take out the latest, just remove the...
Seven, eight minutes?
Yeah, was that last week's minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, seven, eight?
No, two weeks ago, but yes. Okay, so, the consent agenda, minus the minutes for July 8th, do I have a motion?
Well, hold on a second, there's also, I have a question on the road race stuff, unless it's been changed. We have, we have a number of permit, requests for permits, that's only approved by the police department, there's no approval by fire, recreation, health, or town administrator. So, is it, we only have one?
That's my fault, I thought they had, but...
We don't.
All right, so why don't we remove those, just have clarity?
But are, are any of those road races imminent, like?
No.
No.
No, nothing, pretty far out.
Or like October?
Yeah, just take, if, if we could just get these things when, when everything's been filled out.
Okay, so we will remove both road races, we will remove the minutes from last meeting, so we're just approving Harbor Waterfront Advisory Committee and the minutes from 6:18:25.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Cultural Council, sorry.
So moved again.
Moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Great, Select Board time. David, since I asked you to wait, may I suggest you go first, if you're comfortable?
Sure. Thank you. There've been many changes within town and that town hall recently. Here's a few that have occurred within the last few months. Elimination of the assistant at the police department. Elimination of the assistant at the fire department, who was told that her position was going away as she was out on maternity leave. Our public health nurse was told her job was going to be eliminated despite her positions line item being funded at town meeting. Our land use coordinator wasn't hired as our town planner, but she got hired for the same role in the city of Malden. We had our finance director leave because she was disrespected and not offered a contract until it was far too late, and for far less money than she was offered elsewhere. Just today, we had another finance employee give her notice. We had our recreation director retire this month, and now we've run off another great high-performing town employee, Jackie Camerlingo. With all the turmoil in town hall, the rec department has been a beacon of light in our town, especially this summer, with residents looking forward to movie nights, Wednesday music on town hall lawn, great summer programming, events for our kids, the list literally goes on and on. And in the midst of our busiest season in the recreation department, the acting town administrator decided that the recreation needed to be focused upon, and a change made, despite there being more events than ever before, more, more programming than ever before, and a plan in place that ensured the hundreds of families who have signed up for summer programming would not be impacted whatsoever. But there is an impact, a considerable impact. Jackie Camerlingo's last day with the town of Swambskett will be August 1st. You heard earlier this evening from Jackie that discriminatory comments were made to her during the recreation department hiring process. She was told it was thought she should remain as a part-time, 30-hour-per-week employee so that she could spend more time at home with her son. It's clear, it's clear to me, the decision had already been made before Jackie even had a chance to submit her resume or interview for the position. Upon first learning of these discriminatory comments, I immediately contacted acting town administrator Gino Cresta on May 29th to express my extreme concern. No action was taken. In addition, at the same time, there were multiple reports of confidential information being released as the hiring process continued. I reported it, and again, no action was taken. I continued to express concern over the following month to both acting town administrator Cresta and Select Board Chair Katie Phelan. Despite this, an unethical, discriminatory, and corrupt hiring process was allowed to continue. It's obvious. It's obvious to me the fix was in. Ultimately, a candidate who is politically and personally connected to multiple Select Board members was hired for $20,000 more than the job was advertised for. There should be a full and immediate outside investigation of this matter, and there should only, and there should be an immediate stop to the recreation hiring process until we get to the bottom of what can only be described as a broken, corrupted process and a major, major violation of our public trust. Anything less is simply further proof of continued negligence from our board and from town leadership. Thank you for allowing me to speak three hours after. I did want to make this comment immediately afterwards.
Quick question. Are you accusing me of the discriminatory comments? Just want to clarify that right now.
Can talk to you offline.
No, 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 no. Well, we're definitely going to talk offline, but you're going to clarify that now. Are you accusing me of the discriminatory comments?
My comments stand on their, on their own, Gino.
Really? Are you going to make...
Gino, you were not discriminatory.
Thank you.
Your comments were not, it was not you.
Thank you.
I, I'm like literally speechless, so does anybody have any additional comments?
I do. I am incredibly disheartened by what I just heard. I feel like we made real strides tonight in trying to bridge and heal past issues of mistrust and inappropriate behavior, and we just threw it right out the window, stomped on it, and made a complete mockery of what we just agreed to. So, being the only person on this board that has an HR background, I'm particularly annoyed by the way this whole thing has transpired, and I, I'm going to comment, even though it is my personal opinion, that this discussion should not be happening this way. Okay? I am the first person, and the loudest person in the room, nine times out of 10, ready to make a stink for any reason, but the very fact that we're sitting here discussing a hiring process that is supposed to be confidential is really nauseating to me. Now, that does not, that's not without saying that all of the applicants for this position are stellar human beings, and fantastic at what they do, and I'm speaking directly to you, Jackie Camerlingo. You have transformed the rec department from when, the time you came on to the current day, you have done a fabulous job. That is also not to say that the person that got the position isn't fantastic at what she does. We all live in this town, a very small town, and sometimes, and I've had this conversation with Jackie and many other people, sometimes you win and sometimes you lose. sometimes you win and sometimes you lose. That is the reality of applying for a job. It doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it feel better. It can still sting and be sensitive. But it's how you act after the process is over that really defines you and will continue to define you for the rest of your career. That's what I have found in human resources. Now, that is not to say this process went off perfectly. But I am never gonna sit here and doubt or play Monday morning quarterback when it comes to Gino Cresta. That is the only thing I can say with assurance. I would never suggest or think that he is corrupt or discriminatory or intentionally trying to do anything other than what is in the best interest of the town of Swambskot. He is not perfect. None of us are. I believe the comment was that it was a really difficult decision and you would lose friends either way. That's reality for any hiring manager at any time. I've come across it. I've been part of it. I've beaten out internals. I've been beaten by externals. We all have. It doesn't make it feel good. But the way that we're acting right now is so disheartening to me. And I just, I, I'm, we're taking aim at a process. That's fine. And absolutely, I think there is aim to take for this process, for sure. It did not go textbook the way I would like to see a human resources, you know, process go. But I am not gonna sit here and play he said, she said about who said what, who was wrong. I wasn't in the room. None of us were in the room. We have no idea. The way I hear something may not be the way you hear something. The way you deliver something might not be the way I deliver it, right? But I'm not gonna question the ethics of, of the most difficult role in the building, which is human resources, let me tell you. That woman or that position, let's say that position, gets the flak no matter what. Because inevitably, somebody does not win, right? And, and, and that's, there's emotion involved in that, right? But I'm just disheartened. I, I feel for Jackie. I feel for Charlotte. I feel for everybody involved in the process because we all live here and it's personal and it's sensitive. And it's not something, contrary to what Mr. Demento thinks, it is not something to be discussed lightly and, and sometimes it's one of those things not to be discussed in this manner. It's not sensitive to the people involved and it does no good. It, all it does is harm, right? And that's, that's my personal feeling. So I'm really, yeah, I'm just really shocked. I didn't expect it, you know, I really didn't expect. I certainly expected the feelings of the people involved, but the people that, us, the viewers from the outside of this process, no. I, I don't think we're here to pass judgment. And I'm not, I, I really, any decision made by this man as the interim town administrator has got to be supported by this board. And we need to learn this lesson now because when we hire a TA, we need to do it there too. It might not be what I agree with every time. It might not be what you agree with every time, but they deserve our support. Nobody is gonna want to work here as a town administrator if we keep doing this type of stuff. Calling people corrupt, calling them discriminatory, that's, it's out of line, it's inappropriate, shouldn't have happened. I apologize to you for having to sit through this. I apologize to you for having to deal with this publicly. And you felt like you had to, I understand that. Like, I get it. Yeah, I totally get it from your perspective. And I will work to make sure the process doesn't happen the way it did to you because I, I feel for you. I understand that. We definitely have some things to fix. It doesn't mean that everybody's corrupt and everybody's the devil and everybody has nefarious intent. No, that's not how we go about it, so.
May I? Please? For the last seven, almost eight months, Gino, you have stood up and taken care of the DPW and the town. While people are taking multiple weeks of vacation, off on Fridays, having the weekends off, you've had to jump in, get involved in areas of the town that you didn't even have as much confidence in, even though you weren't totally capable of it. And you, you just put your heart and soul out there. And just recently, you had to make a decision on, on the hiring of a candidate with the goal of making the town a better place. You had to make a hard decision. And because we are a small town.
Small.
Because we're in a, we're in a small town, it makes it personal for everyone. And that's, that's a real problem. David, your comments are so disappointing, I don't even have words for it. Your constant attacks on people. You do not help this community one bit. And I really wish you would take a moment and just reflect on what you're doing overall. Gino, I'm sorry you've had to deal with this. You've done a great job. You've positioned us to be in a better place. And I appreciate it. I'm sorry you've had to deal with this.
Doug?
I guess I'll start with where Danielle started. I think we did make a lot of progress tonight. And, and I, you. David's comments, you know, certainly, you know, don't, don't leave us all feeling rosy. But I guess I, I want to make sure that we don't, we're not flushing everything down that we kind of move forward on tonight. So, and that might be, you know, harder.
Doug, can I just make a suggestion? You stop crinkling your plastics in the microphone. Sorry.
Maybe I wanted to.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
For the sake of the folks with headphones on.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose that, but I understand for some people that may be very hard. I, I understand, you know, some of the concerns that David raises, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't have any firsthand information to, you know, opine on, you know, individual aspects of, of what he said. I do think that there have been questions raised about the process that would be good to make sure we get clarity on because as with a lot of things, things swirl around and it's not so clear kind of what, what the, what the facts are. So I think that would be helpful. I do have to acknowledge that I, I, I think we may have allowed Gino to hire somebody as the interim town administrator, which may or may not be within his purview as the interim town administrator to hire. Anyone, actually, by virtue of charter.
But it was in the offer letter.
What's that?
The charter, the charter is.
We just hired a building inspector also.
Charter's clear. We can hire.
We voted, we, we, we vote that. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not looking to, I'm just, I'm just acknowledging again, like, there's, potentially, I'm not trying to say definitively I know that, but there's, I guess my point there mostly is that there's, there's responsibility probably to go around. So I think we should make sure that we, you know, kind of collect the, the facts. And, and as we did with these other things, kind of, you know, get to the bottom of them professionally in the right place in order to bring closure to this process as we did with a couple of other ones today. I think that's the only, please.
But just to clarify.
Yeah.
In the offer letter, the language clearly states, "Please note, permanent appointment requires confirmation from the permanent town administrator."
Okay, great.
So I covered that.
Great, excellent. So I'll just leave it at that. I, I think, I think we can work our way out of this.
I don't know, Doug.
I don't think so. I don't know.
We just did it. We just did it on several other things earlier today, so. But I understand how people feel.
It's a setback.
So first of all, I want to say, Gino, I will secede some of my select board time back to you if you would like to say anything with regards to some of the allegations. You don't have to, but out of respect for you, I just don't know how.
It's, it's tough to sit here. If I made missteps along the way over the last eight months, absolutely, many of them, right? But for somebody that was worried about the amount of money we had to pay out to the former town administrator because there were allegations made, I could have something similar. My character was just slandered here. Slandered. Yep, shake your head no. So what I'm gonna, right? I have to figure out what the next step is. And why any person would apply for this position after watching somebody that stepped in, that tried to do the right thing all the way. And it's like this, I know it's your opinion, but it's.
We all have opinions.
I was shameful, really. No big, you know, big boy can handle it, but it wasn't right.
You know what? My concern really, to be honest, is not as much to you directly, though I feel badly for what happened to you directly just now.
My kids that were watching this right now.
It's your family. It's your kids. It's, it's this whole community. It's all of us. Because we're all talking, if we listen to Debbie Friedlander tonight, or we listen to Bill Demento, or we listen to anybody, right? It's all about, you know, what information can you give? What can you, how transparent and honest can you be, right? We, we have applicants and people and employees that live in this town, right? Like, what, what are we saying? What are we doing?
We're saying that corrupt, that there's corruption in the board. That's what was said. They're saying that because I had a sign up on, Jackie hosted a sign. Jackie hosted a sign for Katie Phelan when I ran for reelection. If she got elect, if she got appointed, would we have the same conversation? I mean, we all have relationships with many people.
I was at Jackie's baby shower for her most recent child.
I welcome.
What are we talking about?
An investigation into any misgivings with regards to the chair, which you labeled as having some sort of issue in this process. I welcome a transparent, whatever you want to call it. Because I literally, when I found out that my very good friend and wonderful person, Charlotte, applied, I immediately went to Gino and I said, "I will not talk to you about this." Because I cannot be seen as any part of this conversation. I, you brought it up once before, David, and I spoke to you about it, and I told you that.
Right.
And yet you still make the allegation that I, what, put undue pressure on Gino as quid pro quo to get, to get Charlotte a job? That's what you're insinuating there. It might not be what you said. It might not be what you said, but that is what you're insinuating.
Why don't you clarify that?
And then, and then when the acting town administrator asks you to clarify what your insinuations mean, you say you won't do it in a public meeting? You just attacked his character in a public meeting. You just attacked mine in a public meeting.
Attacked a lot of people.
So.
You don't get to drop a bomb and run, right?
Exactly. To then step back and say, "Well, we're not gonna talk about this now." I'm sorry, that's just ingenuous. If you want to live by what you say, then live by it. If you have an accusation that you think I acted in this process, say it.
Right.
I am happy to answer it right now. There is nothing, there is nothing. And for you to insinuate it is insulting to my character and the leadership I have been trying to portray on this board since I was elected as chair.
We had a plan, there was a plan in place that did not impact the summer programming whatsoever.
Your comment, what, no.
You asked.
David, I'm asking you to answer the question, what my participation in this that was unethical or what other, whatever other, I'm sorry, I don't recall all the words used because I literally went blank in my mind. Because I, there was not one thing in this process that I participated in, to my recollection. But you are still making an accusation, an unfounded accusation against my character.
We hired someone with no municipal experience for $20,000 more.
What did I have to do with that, David?
We hired someone with no municipal experience for $20,000 more than the job was applied, than, than the job was posted for. We hired some, we hired someone for $18,000 more than someone with 20 years' experience had. We hired someone and rushed to judgment to do this.
How do you know that?
We just listened.
How do you know we rushed to judgment? How do you know what the resume said? How do you know how the interviews went? Do you have any idea or experience interviewing candidates and what a process looks like? Do you personally have any idea?
Why would we do this right now in the midst of our busy season?
Where are you supposed to leave it empty?
They literally just signed a handbook which asks us to come out of town hall business. And yet you are telling us that you want to be a part of it and you, we rushed all these things and now you want to micromanage the acting town administrator. So do you want to do one or do you want to do the other? Because now I'm confused.
It's just really interesting that, that the timing here, when there was a plan in place.
What is the plan? What was the plan that I'm missing? What was the plan? When, when did, when was there a plan for this position?
Was there a plan discussed?
Like, what am I missing?
There was a, there was a plan.
When?
A plan to keep, to keep everyone, to keep everyone in place.
Who, who made that plan?
And run this rec, and run the recreation department without any, without any interruption. Now there's a, now there's a gap.
But who agreed to that plan?
Come about?
Did you have that plan? Where's this plan coming from? I, I am the liaison to rec. I want to know. Who crafted this plan and who said it was the plan? David, speak to it, please. You're referencing it.
We certainly, we certainly didn't, we certainly heard from our rec commission chair that there was, that there was no consultation with them.
But what about the plan that you're alluding to? You're dropping a bomb and you're running.
Right.
Back it up, Grishman. Let's go. Let's dance. You want to dance? Let's dance.
What's the plan?
Yeah. Well, you had, you had an employee who's worked diligently and given up every weekend.
Yes, fantastic.
Jackie Camerlingo.
She is stellar. I do not discount that. I don't disagree with that. Sometimes people that are stellar lose. Sometimes there are other candidates better suited in different ways. That's reality. You don't, I don't get to question Pfizer when I apply for a job, why I didn't get it. I just didn't get it. That happens. It's life. Sometimes you get screwed. Absolutely happens. Sometimes you get a job you shouldn't have got. That happens too. But who are we?
What you don't get to do is attack people without merit. You don't get to say.
That's it all the time.
You don't get to do that.
Does it all the time.
It is exceedingly frustrating. You and I have had this conversation in the past, David. It is exceedingly frustrating. If you want to make accusations, back them up. If you want to call my character to the floor here, ask me the questions now. What do you want to know? What do you think I did? How do you think I did it?
I, I have to say, I, I didn't hear him accuse you.
Yeah, yes, he did.
I heard the process was corrupt.
No, he didn't say that.
No, he said that there was a, Charlotte and I have a relationship and how convenient it was that somebody got something.
I said, I said a candidate who is politically and personally connected to multiple select board members was hired for $20,000 more than what the job was advertised for. That's a fact.
Who is she connected to, other than Katie? Please tell me.
Let's start at the very beginning. I bought my house from her, okay? She moved out of this town and I, I literally bought my house from her. That is how I met her. She became my neighbor. We are very close friends.
I didn't say, I didn't say any.
Okay, but I'm giving, I'm being transparent.
But this is you, but who else?
You're making an accusation. I'm being transparent.
Who else? Tell me. Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen's connected. Are you connected to her?
No, the.
To Charlotte?
You just said Mary Ellen.
What?
So you're connected to Charlotte. That is what he just said.
She bought a dog for me, but.
Okay.
I mean.
She's on my wife's football team.
She didn't have a.
I went to Jackie's baby shower. What are we talking about? I'm friends with 75% of this town. All of you are as well. What, that's why we don't make the decision and that guy did. Well, at some point, we have to renege a little bit of control and let that person in that role do that job. If Sean Fitzgerald was sitting there, you never had a problem with the decision he made. I had, I had a ton of problems with it. Right? Like, what are we doing? Sometimes I won, sometimes I lost. That's the nature of it, right? But what, what, what are we, what is the end game here? Right? To fix the process. To fix the process, right? I've talked to Jackie Camerlingo. I know she has good intent for that. I also know that she's been working her butt off for the past two weeks to make sure this transition is smooth, okay? Even not getting the job. So that's kudos to her for doing that, right? That's the way to be. Not this, this isn't the way to be. It's not. Because you know what, it still stinks for her every single day and she's going to live in this town and it's uncomfortable. And I don't downplay that. And I still say, "I'm sorry, but sometimes you win and sometimes you lose." We've had this conversation, right? It, it doesn't make it easier, but you're going about it the best that you can, in the right way, right? But this...
It, it is, but there are also, there are also concerns that were addressed, that, that she brought up this evening.
Yes.
That I am, I, I have, I have concerns. And when I, when I had those concerns, I brought them, I brought them to the person that I thought should be able to address those concerns. I expressed my extreme concerns.
Yep, I get that. And, and because they didn't take your concerns and do what you wanted them to do with it, then they are wrong.
And there were meetings had and there were conversations with our council, so...
And I did address the concern.
And sometimes, the opinions we give, I had an opinion for you. I said, "Can we take both of these ladies and leverage both of their expertise areas and hire them both?" We couldn't, right? I made a suggestion, it fell on deaf ears. Am I sitting here crying and overspilled milk because my idea wasn't taken? No, because that's the reality of it. It, it just, just because you don't agree with me doesn't mean you get to say we're corrupt and we're this and we're that. Like, it just, that's just not the way to go about it.
I mean, people are talking about you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, absolutely.
It's not traditional, but I don't think any of this is, so please.
It's not.
Microphone.
Or just come up.
Because there are several of us who are so interconnected, I do think it makes the situation a little bit trickier. Something that was said to me even before this was a thing was optics. That word was thrown around when I went in for a pay raise during budget season. When I said, "Can I just have the opportunity explain, to explain how the rec revolving account works? The fact that it's not taxpayer money? The fact that this feels like money that I've helped to contribute to the department? Please, I know that we're going into this busy season, at least bump me up to full time." And I was told that the optics of that wouldn't work out during budget season or during election season. And that wouldn't work out for everyone else. So I thank you, Katie, for addressing what others might see on the outside. I don't want there to be a division at all. Charlotte and I have worked together beautifully for many years.
Yep.
That was the proposal that I made. From my three years of in the department, the shared responsibility would have streamlined a lot. And we would have worked, I said it was the dream team and I know that echoed to you. You said that when you gave me my decision that maybe I, maybe I did shoot myself in the foot by singing her praises the way I did. I also said, "I'm not going to shit on somebody to try and get ahead either." But for a system that was seemingly working against me just based off of the optics, it was tough to swallow the optics of this. So I appreciate what you're saying. I also appreciate what David's saying because there are people out there who question it given the relationship and her campaigning. It is a tough pill to swallow. It doesn't mean that I want to reverse this process at all, I wouldn't go through it again. I know it was tough for you. That's another thing of optics. It's really, really tough to put people in a position when you're essentially interviewing for another job. If you guys think that your opinions don't hold weight, they do. They do. I've spoken to you, Mary Ellen, about that. Your opinion held weight. That first year, I coasted on the fact that you were like, "You're my favorite employee in town." That's why I showed you that text message. That's why it meant something to me to hear why your perspective changed on me. It wasn't to be confrontational, I didn't start the conversation yelling. I literally just wanted an explanation because I had no understanding of why that... I heard that you liked tough conversations and I was ready to have one with you. And I appreciate the time you spent with me to have that difficult conversation. And I did feel like we came out on the other end where we could be in the same town and look at each other with respect. I've tried to handle this in a way where I'm not being divisive, where it's not making, it's Team Jackie or Team Charlotte, but I've heard that along the way. The optics of it has been tough to swallow. The hardest part, I think, now is knowing her pay rate, what she's being brought in on, because that is a very different ballgame. I hope, because these conversations weren't happening with me and according to Danielle, Danielle Strauss, they didn't happen with her. I really hope that you guys have the wherewithal with that account to know what's outstanding for the summer. I know we're throwing a lot of resources to events that I'm not manning. When Danielle Strauss has been pretty frugal in that department. We've, we've made a lot happen with little. I'm going to leave it at that. I think I'm going to go sit down now because I think I need to. But I appreciate the work, Danielle, that you spoke to about the unity, getting the handbook underway. No matter what anybody says, five of you were voted into these positions to represent members of this community. And as I said, I just, I can't walk away from this situation knowing that this could be maybe a potential niche. Maybe we, we don't always have an interim TA making these decisions and it is just this weird convoluted thing that happened. But we need to address the optics of this and we need to bring it out loud. I don't think this is something that needs to happen behind closed doors. I think this is something that we can talk about in the public arena and say, "Hey, this is what it looks like, but let's talk about it." Let's set a more solid, more solid hiring protocols. Who's going to sit on that? When it is brought down to just one person making that decision, who else could we bring on as an expert to weigh in on this? We had people, we had the liaison, we had Jill Cesari, she spoke, she would have sat in on these. There, there was a way to go about it that I just don't feel like was addressed because it was pretty hurried. I don't think it was an emergency situation. What David was alluding to about the plan was Danielle Strauss had said that she would stay on part-time this summer to see us through the busy season. Another decision that I voiced when I was asked, "What would your plan be for Danielle Strauss?", I said, "I would keep her on at this point." Now we're just too close to the busy season to get rid of her because it's going to be so hard to just micromanage somebody in our busy season. I think that's the plan that David was speaking to. And that was also a decision that might have shot me in the foot because I didn't draw enough separation between myself and Danielle Strauss for whatever reason that might have been. Hopefully that provided some clarity.
Can you?
Hopefully we can move forward and be okay, because I, I will be, I will be. And I have faith in you guys.
Thank you.
I just, I, I have one thing to say that we have to remember. This is a personnel issue. And that way too much has been said about personnel. But we cannot, we cannot comment on things that have been made. We can't comment on plans that are might have been. We can't comment on the, on the interview process or the hiring process. We can't, there's a lot of things we can't comment on which makes it really hard to say, "Well, we need to have more transparency or we need to have a different process." I just think our hands are really tied here. This is just, the fact that we're in this conversation is just so unfortunate. This is something that should just have been held inside, taken care of inside.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody want a second?
I'm in a good tone.
Somebody has a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.